Ms. Hall, can you do the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase here. And Ms. Buckman.
Here.
Ms. Guy.
Here.
Ms. Halstead.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Ms. Randall.
Here.
Ms. Sigmund.
Here.
Ms. Solomon is not here quite yet. Dr. Warner, here. I'm sure you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Got a motion, got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post? Motion passes. Moving on to item 3.01. Proposed revisions for elementary report cards for the 23, 24 school year.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm delighted to introduce several members of our elementary team. A new face to the table is Alexis White, who is the principal at Garrisonville Elementary School and was our finalist for principal of the year. She is our chair for the elementary grade report revision committee. And her and Kim Austin will go through some recommendations for the board's consideration.
All right, I'll go ahead and get started. I know you all have the slideshow ahead. So the first one is just a view of one of our current report cards. Currently, our report cards are one for kinder, one for first through third, and then a separate for fourth and fifth. But we wanted to streamline that and make it more efficient for our families because that's very overwhelming and certain things don't apply to certain grade levels. So our goals and outcomes for this year were to make a more family-friendly document to help our families really understand what standards-based grading is and make sure that the comments are specific from teachers about students and to align those work and study habits as well. So we had two separate groups of people that we surveyed back in October to align the first quarter, our parent group being one and then our elementary school staff being the second. We also had a school-based committee to go over the revisions, all of our schools represented and across various grade levels and areas of focus. And then, of course, our consulted members at central office as well. So way back in the beginning of the school year, we started the process of looking what our current report card was and then where we wanted to make changes based off of that survey feedback that went out in October. The feedback that came back from our families really focused on wanting to have an explanation of what our grades mean, what the reporting categories mean, some examples and some resources so they can work with their students at home. So we considered all those parts, along with our staff requests, that it was one per grade level, and then looking at condensing some of those grading areas to make it more concise for families. We spent time this fall and winter making those edits and working with those teams of people. In January, the principals all took back a draft copy of the K through five report cards to share with parent groups in their buildings to solicit any additional feedback. And then we made those changes in February and March to have those ready to share. So the what is we are super excited to share with you some templates of what the report card, now called grade report, would look like. They are specific by grade level. And the really cool part is that they have division content descriptors that align to our county pacing. So they are specific each quarter to what our students are assessed on and what they're supposed to master each quarter so that parents can truly see if a student did not master it, what that actually looked like, so they know how they can assist at home and they can ask teachers questions for those additional pieces as well. Those will change each quarter so that the families can see, but on parent view and also provided at the beginning of the school year will be the whole year so that they'll kind of be able to see an encompassed view of what each of those quarters look like. That one you can click on at your convenience, but that is all six grade levels with the descriptors. There's also a cover letter that goes along with them to explain to families how to best use our report card. There will also be a website that will be created this summer with resources for our families for ways that they can help at home as well. And then the when, we are working on some professional development to roll out to teachers and families for ideal rollout to be the summer of 23. And that's it.
All right, I'll just go around the table. We'll have everyone ask questions as we get a chance to preview this. Can I sit with you, Dr. Warner?
Sure. First of all, I like the change and I think that consistency so that parents aren't looking at three different report cards for three different groups of kids and then that doesn't even include high school and middle school. So I think this does get confusing and overwhelming. And I like the fact that there's specific standards and when there's, I'm sure there's information on how to access resources for that effect. So I like it. I have no real questions or input other than that. I think that the more we can tell parents and the better we can give them an idea of where their kids are doing, I think it's always, and the better they understand the way we're doing our job. So I got my best.
Okay. Ms. Healy?
Well, first I want to thank you for involving the parents. I don't know, Ms. Olson, you might remember, maybe a decade or so ago when this changed, it was an uproar and no parents were consulted.
I do remember that.
And it was just a nightmare. But this just sounds like smooth sailing the gateway. But I do have a question. I noticed in the numbers where the parents were asked, you know, how they want this presented, 51%, you know, like paper, so maybe they're like older, like some of us. And then 19 didn't particularly, you know, care. How are we going to present it? Are the parents going to have an option as to how they want to access this data from the report cards?
So most schools now provide options to families. So if families want paper, they provide paper. Some schools just do all paper and others use parent view. There is a way in parent view for us to see which parents have viewed it, so if they haven't, we can certainly send paper copies as well. So lots of different options to work what's best for our families.
And do we address, you know, families said English is not their primary language.
Yes, it is available in their home language.
How do we address that in terms of, you know, communicating the results?
It's available in their home language.
That's great.
On, in paper? Yeah, if they print from parent view, it's in their home language.
Well, but do we send it home?
If we send it home, we send it home in their home language.
That's what I'm referring to.
That's good to know, thank you.
Yeah.
I also like this and I definitely went back and looked at a couple of elementary report cards myself and there's a lot of information in there. You didn't get to see the whole drill-down matrix thing for the all-six grades. I know that just in my engagement, particularly with new families, is kind of the breakdown of the 1, 2, 3, 4, particularly the 4, because it is so elusive and it's not always available and sometimes it is and isn't. And I know for parents who are, you know, either used to an ABCD grading system where they see a 4 and they wonder, well, if 4 is the best and my kid's not getting it and can't get it, like there's a lack of understanding for what this grading system is and how it isn't just a matchup to letters to numbers. So I would love to see, and I don't know what that looks like, that's all you, but some explanation as to what that is and how that works with each report card because I know that I often even need a reminder every, every quarter. But I do like this a lot. And maybe I missed it, but are we doing any of the behavior things or is that all going to be in commentary?
Yes. So on that, to the right side, those top pieces align to our profile of Virginia graduate. So it's our C5W for those of you who have been here for that. So communication, collaboration, critical and creative thinking, and citizenship. And then there are some bullet points under that to really align us to what those expectations are that we want to create in our lifelong citizens. So they're still on there, they're just worded a little bit different.
And they're, it's much more compressed, which is nice.
It's really cool.
Ms. Guy?
Yes, so I know that this was sent to us earlier. I was not able to get to it. And then seeing this, it's too darn small, so I will take my time when I get home. So if I do have questions or feedback, who would I bother? Oh, okay, I didn't know I could still bother.
My God, I was like, no.
You know what I mean?
I know, it's more than me, I'm like, what are you doing?
So it says, and I couldn't see, I just can't see, so.
Please ask me all the way.
Letter grades slash percentages is what parents want because it is, like she said, the 1 through 4 makes no sense. And then I heard you say you're going to have that information of what 1 through 4 is. Would that be printed on the report card?
Yes, so it is printed on the report card of what the grade scale is so that families understand that. We did clear up some of that language as well. With those descriptors, it will make it very clear so that people can see what the expectation was. With the old one, that was very vague. So this will definitely clear up those pieces for families to understand what that looks like. But then we'll provide those additional resources as well for them to use at their convenience for what those additional pieces look like.
So I know you can't predict things in the future, but for one thing that I had with my kids always, depending on the teacher, some teachers never gave a 4. It doesn't exist. Some teachers do. But when you've cleared up the language and whatnot and then so on, so would that stuff like that not happen, do you think?
So we actually, I just came from the professional learning side of it, so we're planning to do, all redo a professional learning for our staff in August.
Okay, so everyone's on the same page. All right. And then I guess, like I said, I'll just look at it and read it because it's still using a number thingy, not grades yet.
It's still standards-based, aligned to school board policy.
And is that like the best thing to do or is that just what we always do?
Yes.
Do you get what I'm saying?
And in particular, this actually gives more information to parents than a straight percentage because unfortunately, in a percentage situation or a letter grade situation, you have to ask, well, what does that mean? And you could have the same grades on the same assignments in two classes right next door to each other and have two final grades that are totally different based on how a teacher weights a particular assessment. This is talking about whether or not the child actually learned a specific skill or standard. So in a way, this communicates more thoroughly the status of the student in terms of their progress. So, you know, in a perfect world, we would probably conceptualize grades all the way through their senior year of high school this way, but this is a good place for us to be right now because of what we're trying to do at the elementary level in terms of creating that strong skills foundation going into middle school and challenging some of the comfort level of parents at the secondary levels, especially given how transience is, how transient some of our community can be with the military and other parts of the community. That might be a bridge too far at the moment. But for right now, this is a great forward step in terms of being a little bit clearer in communicating where precisely our kids are. And this is actually something that has been echoed throughout the state as well. The state, our governor, as well as the Board of Education and Department of Education are also very concerned about how transparent we are in communicating with parents. And this is probably the most transparent way of communicating progress.
Okay. And then my only, my last question is, now it's called the new grade report? That's what it will be called when we get it instead of report card. But even you referenced it as the report card. So if we all know it's a report card, why are we changing it to new grade report? Because I'm going to be like, let me see your report card. And my kid's going to be like, okay. So I'm just like, you know, I'm just asking. Like a rose is still a rose and we can call it teflon, but like, we know that as a rose.
So grade report goes along with line that it's not necessarily paper. So a report card implies it's a card, a piece of paper. So the grade report is just showing what their grades are cumulatively across.
So we're just going to have to change our thinking.
It's going to be a little.
I'm here for it.
Change the parents' thinking.
I'm just going to call it a report card. Everyone's going to call it a report card.
Ms. Austin?
I mean, I want to just say that, I mean, you got to go, you got to go to Neo Tech and just take a picture when it's too small and blow that up on your phone. But I'd like to know what student was absent 12 days. No, I'm just kidding.
It's probably mine. Just keep it real.
All right, so I did get a chance to look at this. I do like it. I actually have brought this up to governance before, kind of our grading standards and looking them because I'm, I'm not 100% a fan of the 1, 2, 3, 4 because I don't know what metric we're telling our kids. I'm an ABC kid all the way through. But I do like the level of detail in here and how well thought out it's been in terms of identifying the specific objectives that each topic has for the kid. So then my question is, and maybe this is like what Maureen was saying also before is, you know, so another common metric, and one of the other things I hear from parents too, is that elementary, not the kids, the parents, that they don't have enough homework. They're not seeing them do enough homework at home. So what is making up this assessment that they're having? Is it just tests? Is it whatever? Like, what are we making the kids work for? And then how is that being articulated to the parents? That's my first question.
So in an elementary classroom, so much of what they do is assessed because we're looking at quick checks of what they're doing. We're looking at their discussion of what they're doing. We're looking at project-based learning. And then, of course, there are formative and summative assessments that we are using as well to drive that. So with this, it does allow us to look at truly what skills they're obtaining and if they've obtained that skill, then how do we extend it? So it does provide that flexibility on that side. Our teachers are constantly assessing what their kids are doing across all sorts of mediums. So it doesn't just lock us into having a set test. Most of that is communicated with families, whether it's the work that goes home in their folders or if it's things that they're printing out that they've done in Google Classroom or things like that, projects that they've created. So lots of different opportunities for parents to engage, but that's also where that website will help, to give them some samples of what a 3 looks like to meet these different descriptors so they can truly see what that looks like on grade level.
So, thank you. That is very helpful. And I wasn't even thinking, you're right, I mean, you really are assessing, especially the younger kids, even like fine gross motor skills and all that other stuff and going through to see where they are. So I wasn't even, well, I really am old school.
I know.
So, so bad, it's right? It's like, read textbook, test textbook, good job, kid. Like, ah, sorry, I'll get there someday. So the other question I have just in terms of, so this is new grade report template? This has division content descriptors?
Yes. So if you look under where it says, you can see, and there's like a, there's a couple lines underneath, that box underneath are the division descriptors. So that's just kind of blown up for you to see.
Oh, I thought it was a whole other report.
Nope, so it's right on that front page for families to see truly what was learned during that quarter.
Okay, cool. So then, and then the last thing really is, I see the pluses and the whatever things. So all that is quantifiable as well to the parents, like what that means in terms of...
Correct. The plus means they're approaching that next level.
Or super close, all the same, not.
Correct. And then the asterisk is that they've received a accommodation or modification to that one.
All right. I mean, I feel like it's going to take me a while to get comfortable with it and really kind of want to talk on it.
And I think that's why we're circling back, like, for all staff to be, have professional learning on again, as well as all administrators.
I might need to come then.
Well, and it's been a while since we've been intentional about that, so.
Yeah.
And you're welcome to come.
Yeah, please, let me know when it is, just so I can understand it as well. Because I mean, like, he was like giving some of it to me as well and I'm like, oh, that totally makes sense. But, you know, I'm five minutes out of the conversation, I'm like, what did he say? So if I could spoil.
That would be awesome.
I know. Thank you.
That really is funny. Do you have any other questions?
No, good, thank you.
So I was here for the, my kids were in elementary school when we shifted from letters to numbers many years ago. And this doesn't look that different to me, other than maybe formatting and how you're doing whatever, making it not so long. And yeah, it is an adjustment, the 1, 2, 3, 4, but I do think there is some value to not putting so much into how we rank our children and compare them to other people's children and why don't we just make it about our kids learning what they need to learn. And so I like this report card because it lets our elementary school kids be kids, not competing with one another for who can be wherever. So I'm fine with it.
I also think the number system allows you to measure what they've learned in a way, the skills they've obtained. And when you have elementary school, you have, you know, such a variation in age. You have very young first graders and older first graders, and that can make a difference in where they stand on those. And so I think this is much less judgmental, for lack of a better term. So I thank you for all the work you've done.
No pleasure.
So when you did the surveys, you surveyed all staff and all parents?
All elementary, all 17 schools.
Oh, that's awesome.
Can I just finish one? Yeah. So are we still requiring parents to come in to get the first, the first grade report, whatever, of the year? Okay, good, because I've heard from parents.
Well, they do. They can get it online, but they have to conference first quarter.
They have to conference first quarter.
That's good.
Great.
The other thing, I, one of the biggest complaints I heard even from teachers was the amount of time it took to write those and do the, fill out those grade reports. This looks a lot more compressed, so I'm hopeful that it'll be. But the other part of it is that when you gave us the same report card, every grading period, the lines never changed. So I never knew what, what numeracy did he actually have. So I'm going to assume that's not teacher typed, that's all.
That is division pushed down.
Pushed, okay. So that's less work on them to do.
Yes.
I like that a lot.
And it forces consistency.
Yes, yeah. Well, and, yeah, and everybody knows where everyone is because, I mean, like I said, you know, you may be talking about story elements in the first grading period, but not in the second. But the way that it was always done before.
Right.
I would never know that that was the thing you were talking about or that it had gone on to something else. So as a parent, when you want to engage, I just didn't even know what to ask. And the other thing, well, the other part I had was, Dr. Chase and I had been talking, was about the languages. So I'm happy to hear that all of that will be accommodated for them. And so what do you do for parents that may or may not come in for that first grade report?
Or don't speak the language the teacher and the parent can't communicate.
So we have interpreters if there's a language disconnect, so we always make sure we provide that piece. If parents don't come in, we have a three, three-contact policy in our school. So email, you call, you send something in the bookbag. If you still don't hear, then I call. Because that first one is super important for them to understand the grading system, to understand where their student's performing, and then how we can make that partnership work to kind of continue to improve that. So we really try very hard to get in every family for that first quarter.
Okay, good to hear. Well, I'm super excited about this. I really feel like the simplicity of the report card for the teacher part and obviously for the parent part, but I like to see that that little part gets changed out each time so I can be really aware of what my kid is getting. Maybe do you have something?
I just would like to follow up on one thing.
It's not your turn.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's not your turn, Dr. Warner.
Sure, I was just going to say, it looks really awesome. I mean, I remember coming home in elementary school and I'd have like a 3 on my report card. My mom would ask me, hey, what does this mean? And I would just say, mm, I don't, I don't really know. And I think it also eliminates a lot of the subjectivity that comes with these number grades. So I think it looks really awesome.
So perhaps I missed this, but is this just going to be for elementary school students?
Yes.
Okay. And then is there any plans to kind of make the transition from number-based grades to letter-based grades in middle school or anything?
Not this time.
No?
Yeah, not this time.
And letter grades in middle school?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we do. And then the standards that are boxed in right now, are those based off the Virginia Department of Education standards?
Yes.
And how?
Yes.
Okay. And then also, I know we were talking about how there's kind of a disconnect between like parents and this specific grading system because most of them grew up in a time where it's like ABC. I know my parents did. We are all very confused with the number system. But is there going to be maybe some sort of informational or way to, yeah, to inform the parent? Something like that.
The website will have a video. I just heard Ms. Guy say. So the website will have a video overview of the report card and grading system, report and grading system, and those samples as well. But then our teachers will continue to support that through parent conferences and back-to-school nights and those types of things, too.
That may be happy.
Thank you.
Love a video.
I just have a quick follow-up. At the end of the year, when they've done all their, they've got their final report card, the items that they did not, had not previously accomplished in the other marking periods, is there going to be a summary so parents can say, okay, you know, they met this goal, now they're moving forward?
Yeah, so the descriptors will change, but then there's also still the individual student comments that they would address those pieces.
Speaking of individual student comments, is there, is that also the mechanism to provide feedback for any of the encore or special subjects? Because I keep thinking about, like, we have encore art, for example, and some of that, if we want to talk about our pathways, might show skill at the elementary level. And, you know, my kids aren't super artistic, but, but I would like to think that we are providing feedback for, you know, either areas of concern or, you know, unexpected skill in a particular area outside of what is actually graded, that that's meeting its way over.
Our specialists work with our teachers to add any comments of glows or grooves.
Okay.
I just want to point out, though, that the one thing that always stood out to me, the 1 to 4, that my nephew was convinced when he got a 1, it's because he was number one. And number one is the best. And remembering that thought process was a little difficult, but anyway.
He'll get the most attention.
He's getting there now. Yeah, I know, it's true. There you go. I'm happy with you.
I'm still traumatized by a D I got in handwriting in third grade.
I'm so glad handwriting's not on here anymore.
Okay. Moving on to 3.02. Proposed implementation plan for Stafford specialty academies.
The saga continues, Mr. Bolway. And it's fast and it's going to have to be fast, as usual, as well. So it's a pleasure to be with you again to kind of pick up where we left off in our discussion about the, about our, trying to provide better opportunities for students for meaningful post-secondary outcomes, which today we're going to be talking about the Stafford Specialty Academies. I think it's important that, one of the first things that we talk about is what is a specialty academy? And so here you, you'll see the bullets and I won't read them to you, but it provides specialized coursework and experiences for students that are focused in different areas that meet the needs of the, of the community as, on the whole. It also provides the students, students that have very particular interests or areas of interest with a community that, that also shares that, that focal point. And then the last couple of points talked about having, providing students with, with experiences that really help them explore whether or not this is really what they want to do in the rest of their life. It's kind of early to make a big decision like that. So a lot of times we find that students in specialty programs will find out if that's truly what they're, what they're aiming for in life. And they may find out that, well, that's not really for me, which is a great lesson learned. I mean, I think we've all learned what we didn't want to do through different experiences. And then finally, just giving kids more opportunities for acceleration into their career or into post-secondary work. So when I, we'll go on to, and to some of the core tenets that, that will be a part of each of the academies that are planned, the proposed academies. And that would include pathways for students that are going immediately into the workforce, for some that will need some college prior to entering a career, and then for certain students that, you know, may have four or more years before they go into careers, like for instance, to be a medical doctor or in some case, engineering, depending on the program and, and others. We're going to provide them with some keys to success, and this is, this is really important. So for students that are going directly into the workforce, one of the ways that you enter the workforce directly out of high school is to have industry certifications or credentials. And if you, it shows your employers or potential employers that you have the skills needed to be hirable. Now, for the students that are not going straight into the workforce, we would then provide a lot of specialized coursework and experiences that will give them a leg up on their competition when they're applying for different programs at colleges and universities. So some of the things that will be common to all of the specialty academies that we're going to discuss will be, we're going to have a focus on the same things that the elementary report card was talking about, which is the C5W, also known as the five Cs at the Department of Education. And these are critical skills for any student that's entering a workforce or any, any person that's entering the workforce is being able to collaborate and critically think and communicate well. Work-based learning experiences will be a part of this, so trying to get students involved in either service learning or mentorships or externships or internships. in either service learning, or mentorships, or externships, or internships. And then also, we will have two strands that go through each academy. One that's focused on entrepreneurship. We don't want to teach students just how to work for somebody else. We also want to teach them how to run their own business. And then also, we want to give them the leadership skills that really catapult them to the next I promised you that we would talk a little bit about the survey responses, both at middle and high school. Last time when I showed you the high school responses, we've now gotten responses back about eighteen hundred from the middle school, parents and students. They mimicked what was found in the high school, so you find certain areas that are of interest in both. And so you can see as I flip back and forth that it's very common in the trends here. The proposed academies for implementation are as follows, that you'll see here. Now, the first one is the Academy for Technology and Innovation. That is not necessarily just a Stafford school. That is going to be a regional lab school that we have been really working to kind of shepherd through the process of development. And the board will hear a presentation about that tonight. Tonight, right. And so the first two academies that would be Stafford academies for Stafford students would be the Law Leadership and International Relations, and the, and these are all proposed. And so, you know, we want to hear from you all, we want to get your feedback, the names, locations, all those things are not finalized, but here's what has, is being proposed. And so that would be, those two first ones, or three first ones, would be available for this year's seventh grade students. That means eighth graders next year would be applying to that during the fall and winter. In 2526, we propose opening up two more academies, one focused on health sciences and human services, and the other on business and entrepreneurship. And then in 2627, the aviation, transportation, and logistics, along with the media science, visual, and performing arts. Now, I wanted to loop back to the 2425, and when we look at law, leadership, and international relations, and the engineering and design, the engineering and design will include some focus on incorporating skilled trades. And so we have some programs, especially at a place like, for instance, like maybe Stafford High School potentially, that we could align very well with existing programs to build it out and make it better, and make it, provide more opportunities to more students. The other one, law, leadership, and international relationships, relations, might really dovetail nicely with programs that exist in the school, like potentially Mountain View High School that already has a strong international baccalaureate program, and could kind of build upon those themes. So that's just a few ideas on schools that might be aligned currently with the focus of those. Keys to implementation here are gonna be, obviously, key communication with stakeholder groups and partnerships with organizations. We're currently brainstorming lists of folks to invite, to brainstorming sessions about the vision, about what the experiences will be in each academy, and in hearing from them so we can develop something that's meeting the needs of the community. Strategic planning is absolutely going to be essential to this because of the physical, you know, the facilities, but also, and most importantly, our human capital, our teachers that exist in these programs, making sure we know, and we've done an asset mapping, to know what we have, who we have, and where we have, and what they might be interested in, what they are able to teach, but might be interested in teaching. I think one of the most exciting things about these programs for teachers is, if they have passion areas that align with one of these, they might be able to apply for, to teach in one of these programs that could really build upon their passions and interests individually. And, you know, that kind of passion bleeds into kids every day. I mean, when kids see passion in teachers, that's what makes it come to life for them. Obviously, grant exploration will be a big part of this. We, you know, funding is always a concern, and we'll be working with the board of supervisors, I know, on an ongoing basis to provide additional funding. But, you know, what we're gonna try to do is leverage what we have more than asking for more. It's about, we have a lot of great assets right here in Stafford County. So it's, what do we have now? And then we, for instance, submitted a grant, a grant today about, for skilled trades. And so it's to build out that program. So if you look at this list, this talks about our existing programs. And this is not about saying whether yes or no things stay, it's about how they might evolve. It's about looking at enrollment. It's about finding out what's a powerful program, what needs revamping, what needs a facelift. So for instance, like, you look at the last one on the list, manufacturing. Well, we have a manufacturing program, but we might be able to dovetail that into the logistics program. You know, logistics is about supply chain and delivery and Amazon types of things. And then you have things like the stat program that has an engineering program, and so that's a governor's STEM academy. It's approved by the state. We would need to go back to the state and say, we're gonna not only, we're gonna build on that program, we're gonna expand it into a full academy. And so then the governors, then the governor's seal, you know, for that STEM academy, might even pertain to the entire academy at the school. And so we may expand our existing programs, and we may find some that we need to just let go of, you know, matter-of-factly, because the needs of the community have changed, and in the greater region. So finally, here are our next steps. We'll be looking at, in July and August, as, you know, getting stakeholder feedback, and then bringing back these propositions to you all in July and talking about it in more detail, each one of the academies, like really diving into each academy, and then looking at approval through the program of studies for the first two academies that would be offered to rising ninth graders of, you know, sorry, next year's eighth graders that would be rising ninth graders in 2425. And then if approved by the school board, we move forward steadily into the fall and winter with recruitment and, you know, application systems and, you know, building out those programs and getting students involved and enrolled for the first time in August of '24. It's like a five-year build-out. Yeah. Because you really have preparations for a ninth-grade cohort two years from now, and then you have preparations for ninth and tenth grade, and then ninth and tenth and eleventh grade, and then ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade. So it's a five-year process till it's built out to fruition, which kind of dovetails with your strategic plan. It kind of mirrors that in terms of focus on post-secondary outcomes. But there's a lot of work that needs to be done between now and your July meeting, where you've got some marrying of potential locations and programs and some consolidation that we might recommend before you even consider this for about in August. But it's good to give you a progress update, kind of show you where we are in the planning phase, but it's still a ways away.
All right.
So how do we integrate current students?
Never mind. We'll wait till July.
Thank you. No, no, we're going around. Dr. Chase?
Sure. So I guess the couple of things, you know, I don't really have any sense of what the price tag of this is, and so I have a little bit of concern about that. You know, in the past, when we've added new programs and things, sometimes you just have very small classes, so you have a teacher teaching a class that only has five students. And so that's expensive, and so I just don't quite understand that. And if it is gonna cost some money, is that the best place for the money? And I have to say, I'm really concerned about our, I'm really concerned about our middle schools. I keep getting these emails telling me that things are being consolidated and that they're, you know, I mean, like to find out that Drew had no drama this year. I'm glad they're gonna have it. Yeah, I'm glad they're gonna have it next year, but they didn't have it this year. So I feel like, I absolutely think that this is fine, but I want to know the price tag, and I want, I mean, to be told that the new middle school schedule wasn't gonna require more math teachers, and of course it requires more math teachers, right? So I'm just a little, like, you know, I want some more details. I want to know what this is actually gonna cost, and who are we consolidating and taking jobs away from other schools in order to make jobs in new schools, and not just go blindly into this, that it's, you know, whatever. So that's my concern. I just need more detail.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, there's some short answers, which is that you actually might realize a little bit of a financial efficiency, because you do have some under-enrolled programs that in normal circumstances, there's no way they would make.
Just show me the beef.
Yeah. But to that end, we owe you that in actual numbers, and that's probably all of your July work session.
Great, terrific.
Be prepared. Be very prepared.
I just have one to follow up on. Could we also address the middle school at that work session? I think Dr. Chase makes a really good point about, you know, not the proverbial Robin Peter to pay Paul, but I want to make sure that anything we do in the high schools to enhance does not have a negative impact on our ability to provide, you know, if not enhance, in the middle schools as well, because we all know we have great need in the middle schools. If you could kind of look at that at the same time, that would be helpful for me. Thank you.
It's a great suggestion.
Okay, Ms. Hulston?
I just was looking at the timeline there and knowing that, you know, High School VI is supposed to be opening in '26 or hopefully '27.
Twenty-five, '26?
Yeah.
Or '26, '27?
Twenty-six, '27, but, but how does that impact its ability to take on one of these academies? Because are you building one of these into that design, or are you just?
Should, yes, should.
So we need to, we would need to figure that out now.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all I have on that.
Thus the conversation.
Gosh. No, he thinks those are, all right. Yeah.
Ms. Guy?
I have a lot of questions, too. I think that I don't know what I don't know, but I need to see stuff.
Sure.
But the question that I did have that just flew out of my brain, gosh darn it, was about, dang darn it. Could you come back to me?
Again, listen.
I had a question about, and maybe we see some of this already, but how having these academies impacts, like, our reporting for test scores? Because we have all of our, let's say, engineering kids in one high school, and everyone says that, like, acing Algebra II is like the best thing you can do for SATs, right? So we putting all of those kids, or a lot of those kids, in one high school, and then that high school tends to be blooming, and then maybe the law kids are the better ones at English or something. And, like, how do we make that not reflect negatively on a school that might not have a test-heavy program in it?
Couple of points. That's a really good question. So there's a couple of things that I would add. Is that in each one of these academies, how they're conceptualized in other places, and we'd follow a similar model, is that there's lots of different access points. Not just your high-achieving kids who are gonna pursue engineering to become licensed PE engineers, but there also may be a component of this tied very closely to building trades. And that's also a group of kids that may, where Algebra II may be the last math class that they take, and they're still a part of the engineering academy, but they're just a part of a different subset within.
Sure.
Pathway within the academy. Yeah, and so there's still one of the pathways, but that's tied to that. Like with anything, you know, you would be transferring to a different school outside of your zone, but also keep in mind, this would not be the entire school. So it's also just a portion of a portion. So it's almost like a school within a school, and so it's not all of the kids. And if you have some proclivities towards mathematics, for example, almost all of those academies do require some strength in mathematics, because that's gonna be a part of it. And so we probably just need to have robust mathematics across the division and plan for that ahead of time.
Well, in general, but...
Thus, thus some of the changes we've made to elementary and middle school mathematics, kind of going into this, knowing that our mathematics are a little bit behind where we really need to be, and structurally, we're kind of at the root of some of that. So how do we create cohorts of kids that are kind of ready for this? And I think that that's maybe dovetails into another question, is what do we do with existing things that are going on versus new programming that's coming online? And so it's almost like you want to, you don't want to make any interruption to any kid that's adopted a program of study, and they're going through, hey, I agreed to be in the biostat program at such-and-such school, and I'm gonna stick through it. And we have a commitment to make sure that they get through it before we have a cohort of kids that comes behind it doing something else.
Right, and so my question is, what is the cost of that, right? Like, of keeping that going while we start something new, so?
And we will have an answer for it.
And then I have another question about, like, I understand that some of these programs are not full four-year programs. So, one, how do we build those out to four-year programs? What might that look like?
Right.
Two, and maybe if they answered the first part, we'll answer that, but if we are asking children in eighth grade to commit to a program that may or may not start until they're juniors, a lot can happen in those first two years of high school.
Oh, we've got that going on right now, so.
Sure, but, and that's why, like, if we're gonna re-advant everything, we're gonna be re-advanting.
How do we get smart about it?
Yeah. Especially with transferring.
Right.
Because they are not gonna be travel students that just don't travel anymore, they're gonna be students that need to, like, move.
Yeah, or my favorite scenario is one that Dr. Chase has pointed out a couple of times, very much want to be an IB student. I start my IB course of study in the eleventh grade, and I don't want to be an IB student anymore. And then what on earth do we do to them? Well, technically, per policy, you've completed half of your high school education in the IB program, and per policy, you would stay in the school and transfer them out. So this does require even a policy component that is...
I don't think, well, unless we change their policy, it used to be if they didn't pursue the full IB, then they had to go back to their school.
Programatically.
Regardless of whether they were halfway through or not, unless we change that.
No, no, you've got it that way, but you do have a policy component that is confusing to some parents, that if you have been halfway through a course of study in high school and you move or something like that, we do allow you to stay. So interesting, lots of components, lots of moving parts, so we're looking forward to digging in with this. This is an exciting evolution, but it does have a lot of pieces to it.
I know what my question was. It hit me back in the head. So I think this is a great idea, I think it is a big undertaking, and I just want to make sure that I respect the timeline, I like that we have it. So this is '23, '24, so next year is '24, '25, right?
Next fall is '23, '24.
Right.
Wait, what are we running now?
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Thank you so much, okay, because I didn't know where I was.
We have a full year.
So then, okay, so we're two years.
So we got a very slow roll.
That's even, then that makes it look even better in my head. So my question was, is this still doable? I know that you're still structuring central office, and we're having different positions come and go, and I just, like, I guess what I'm afraid of, because you're such a go-getter, is like, if it becomes like, what if we have to push it back to '25, '26 with the first rollout? Would you be willing to come to us and say, we need to push it back?
If we needed to, yes.
You would super do that?
And I'll tell you that there are a lot more moving parts with some of these, more than others. And I'll give you an example. Health Sciences and Human Services, based on parent response and student response, is one of the most popular ones, for sure. I gotta tell you, we need an extra year to plan that out. That one is gonna have a lot of moving parts and a lot of different things to make it really good right out of the gate. Looking at some additional funding through the Claude Moore Foundation that might help support some of the switching costs that Dr. Chase was talking about, and that's what we will refer to it as, is switching costs. What does it cost to maintain two things simultaneously while you're having some overlap? And you're looking at three years of switching costs, effectively, to make a transition like this, before you start really realizing some of the efficiencies. But to make that good, we need an extra year. We could probably move up Business and Entrepreneurship. We probably could move that up to a more aggressive timeline, but again, in the interest of, like, not taking on more than we can handle, we could probably move one or two of them to an outlying year, just so that we could get a couple of them off the ground. You've really got the UMW school is its own thing, it's an independent project, and really looking at it, like, can we do two at a time? And we think we can pull off two at a time, and then the last two are gonna be really intensive. So there's a lot of interest and a lot of financial support and a lot of community support for aviation, transportation, and logistics, but that is the one that probably has the most moving pieces, and probably has the most intricate memorandums of understanding that could potentially come into play, and consequently could also lead to a lot of our high school students graduating with six-figure salaries, too. So it also has the potential for probably some of the biggest impact. So to our, to our ends, it probably makes sense to push that one as far out as practical because we absolutely want that to be perfect when it goes off because of the potential for it to be so high-impact and because it has so many moving parts, but...
Just so, as a final thing, that I feel like, I feel calmer about this than maybe I should be, I don't know, just based on a couple of things that I'm hearing, but, like, we're not inventing a wheel here. This wheel has already been invented. We're just structuring our systems around it. So some of the calm, I feel, is okay, right? Like, because if I need to be panicky, I would... Like, because if I need to be panicky, I will, and I'll be very good at it. I'm just not sure. You know what I'm saying? Like, I, I feel like we're not, we're not, we're not inventing this stuff or really reinventing it. We're just shaping it to fit our needs with what we currently have, and that's based upon budget and everything else.
Yeah, I hate to own this. None of these are new ideas.
I, I know. Sorry.
You know.
There's a couple in there that are pretty unique. I mean, we're not just talking about flying.
You need to twist.
Yeah, you need to twist, right, right.
Airplane mechanics too, not just, not just flying it, repairing them, you know, which is really cool and unique.
I just have a couple of quick questions.
Oh, wait, wait. I got Miss Haley first.
She's like, darn it!
Go ahead, Miss Haley.
I think that expression is hold your horses. If you really wanna go, you can. I'll, I'll go last. I don't care. It's fine.
I, yeah, go ahead.
All right, well, the UMW, is that a commitment for at least four years for our students if they get into that? Because if we're equating that to the rest of these, you know, I would not want students to be put in a disadvantage because the grant stopped or UMW stopped. Do we, what, what term is that set for?
Students would enroll in ninth grade and go through the twelfth grade. But, but you'll hear a little bit more about that from, from Dr. Towery tonight. She's got a presentation.
Right, but is it, is it set for a minimum of the, the four years that we're looking at for our other programs?
Actually, they're, they're seeking some guidance from a, a member of this school board to sit on a regional board to make that determination.
So how many students are we looking at in each of these academies? Is it essentially an equal number?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Yeah, I think, I think you're talking, I think it would be ambitious to have a hundred students per cohort. I think it could be practical to go as low as fifty students per cohort. So I think you're talking about between ten and twenty-five percent of a, of a class could be in one of these academies. So.
And there are certain CTE requirements. For instance, if we, if we were to open up, say, potentially an HVAC or plumbing program, you can't have more than twenty students in a class. So, you know, there, there are different components to that, but we haven't made those final determinations.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that we're really gonna have to look hard at what program goes in what school because the students are gonna be committed to that school for the four years. And we don't want to disadvantage one of our schools by, you know, having maybe a, a choicer program somewhere.
Fifty to a hundred is high compared to like, like with Governor's School and IB. It's like thirty a year, you know, per grade levels. This is an even bigger group than where.
Yeah, and, and you're also talking about lots of different access points, so.
Totally down with that, just comparing it to what we consider a cohort when we talk now.
Reasonably normal compared to a two-thousand-student high school in another community trying to do something similar. If you're, if you're really growing this over the next decade or so, you might get up to a hundred and fifty per cohort. That's not unreasonable to think about it if you had a really popular program that really just absolutely took off and people just couldn't wait to be a part of it. But we think that we've kind of hit the nail on the head in terms of selecting both things that parents and students were very interested in and also things that had local economic impact. Which is a requirement for any type of CTE program and, and really is just smart business for what we should be doing as an organization, so.
Well, the follow-up from Miss, Sue Min's comment about the Governor's School. I think when we're looking at this and locating these programs, we should also look at the locations of our current Governor's School and the IBs. Because right now, we've got three Governor's School locations, which, you know, may or may not be, be filled depending on, on the year. And I know that from time to time, there has been discussion about other students wanting to perhaps sit in on some of the Governor's School classes that weren't quite filled, but we were told, oh, no, you can't do that. That's only Governor's School. So I think we're gonna have to really look at, you know, these classes. And if they're not filled by the cohort, you know, are we going to perhaps? And it's not an answer now, but it's just something to think about. Are we gonna be able to perhaps open them up to some other students at the school who may, who may have an interest? Because I would like to, to have the opportunities for as many students as possible to gain the advantages of this. We may have students that don't wanna commit for four years, but may really wanna take one of these classes. And if there is space available, I would like to try to keep it open.
I think that that's kind of the fun part of this.
Yeah.
Is that kids get to sample things that they may not otherwise be available to.
If we open the classes, because we have never done that in our Governor's School. And then maybe that's because our.
The governor's school has a different schedule and that's the problem. I mean, it's just that.
Well, but they're half a day. It's, it's always been a little.
Yep, no, no. It's the same, I mean, it's.
You know.
It's, because they do the weird Wednesday. Same classes, but out of order and.
Okay, this is, this, Dr. Chase knows what I'm talking about.
Yep, I do.
Okay, okay. That's it. Thank you.
Your turn.
It's my turn. So one of the things I was worried about is the integration of existing students and what they're doing so that they're not being forced out of a program or into a program that they don't want. The other thing I was a little concerned about is we talked about the technology and innovation being at UMW. But we already have a lot of students in computer and other technologically-based coursework here in our schools. Do they all have to go to the UMW campus or are we going to have some of those courses still remaining at, at some of our high schools?
It, it's, it's my intention that we still maintain some IT and, and cybersecurity types of programs at each of our high schools. And, I mean, that one actually is not even about cybersecurity. You'll hear more tonight in the presentation.
Okay, so it's, it's just that computer programming and software development and all those things are, so.
And they pervade all of those academies? That you could, you could add an IT component to all of them, absolutely.
So I just, and I think then too, I, I am concerned about the cost of trying to, to maintain two groups of students on track and trying to make sure that there's an equitable access to all these programs and what they will lead to in, in, you know, as far as, as career or college opportunities. Girl?
My only question was about whether or not it be enrollment or through applications and then the kids get selected to the academies.
Yeah, so all of that is yet to be determined exactly. There, there, one of the processes that happens between now and opening up or the application process is determining what the entrance criteria would be, not just for the entire academy, but for each pathway within the academy. So if you have a skilled trades program, that might be a little bit different than an engineering pathway. Different access points for different kids that need it. And then a part of that would also be the, the acceptance criteria, you know, for the application system itself.
I just had a couple of quick questions. First, I was gonna say, this really stood out to me with the idea of entrepreneurship, incorporating that into all aspects. I thought that was super cool and I really love that idea. So I just kind of quickly wanted to mention it. One thing I was curious about, and I think this may already have been touched on briefly, but a student's ability to change out of courses. Because I know for the IB program, if someone wants to drop a course, they're forced to sometimes sacrifice parts of their, their education by dropping to lower-level classes. So are we gonna be able to prevent that with these programs or?
All yet to be determined still. I mean, but, you know, our hope is to provide as many opportunities for every kid and make sure that there's on-ramps, on-ramps and off-ramps. So if you're in an, if, if you're in a straight engineering program and it feels like it's a little too much to handle or, or a pathway to, to be a medical doctor, there'd be a pathway then, an off-ramp to maybe radiology or something in, in another area. So thank you very much. I'm gonna turn it over to the next group.
High School Six?
Nothing says button it up like people are trying to take your seat.
Well, good evening, members of the board. Just, we'll try to be brief tonight here, but we do have a few folks I just wanted to share with you real quick. This is Kathleen O'Hearn from Grimmon Parker, who's been our architect and one of the lead people and working, working part of this. And then we've got a couple of gentlemen behind me here from MVP, McDonald, Boyer, and Peck, who have been our construction administration assistants. There's actually a contract in front of you tonight on the consent agenda for their services to carry us through construction. But this is Jason McDonald from MVP, who has very extensive experience working building, I don't know how many schools you've done, but the twelve, twelve schools, okay. Practical, hands-on, in-the-field experience. And James Engel, also from MVP, who's got a lot of great experience as well, helped us carry through this process. So this is your new high school site. As you'll notice here, this has got some changes, differences probably from what you saw six months or a year ago. Still obviously Trussler Road there in the back, Stafford Plaza Drive extending up through to Trussler Road. You'll notice that we've eliminated the roundabout at the Trussler Road-Stafford Plaza Drive intersection, which we'll discuss a little bit more in, in, here in a bit. Pretty, pretty standard, basic layout design, but we have made some significant changes over the past six to eight months, which we kind of wanted to highlight for you all tonight. So this is a copy of the first floor plan. One of the things that you would, if you were to go back six months ago and look at what we had then, it was a two-story floor plan. And the wings at the end were enclosed, so there was an enclosed courtyard in the middle. We've eliminated that for a number of reasons. One, three-story, we felt was more cost-efficient and effective in our overall construction and long-term maintenance. As well as this gives us the option in the future, should we so decide, to easily extend those academic hallways there on the right side to continue, continue to add on another six or eight classrooms potentially as, as maybe.
On each wing.
On each wing. Also, you'll notice that we've reorganized the purple area, which is your arts and music area. One of the things we'll talk about here in a moment with the academy programs that you all were just talking about. This is, this is geared towards being an arts and music school. This has a thousand-seat auditorium. This is, we have not done a thousand-seat auditorium in any of our schools so far, of course. So that is one thing that will distinguish this school from the rest of them. But other than that, it is a pretty, pretty, pretty typical basic school, which we'll talk about. One of the things you'll also notice is, if you had looked six or eight months ago, there was a lot of collaborative space and other spaces throughout the hallways. We've eliminated, eliminated that. We've gone to a very simplified dual-stack design where you've got, you know, pretty, pretty standard design here with, with the, with the classroom space. We've come up with what we believe is a very efficient design. We've been able to maintain, one of the things we did hear from the community early on and often on this was maintaining some natural light in the school. So you'll notice that the classrooms on this still all have a lot of natural light, which is also a distinguishing point from our previous schools. If you were to go to Forge and Mountain View and others, you would know that there have some interior classroom space that does not have as much natural light. So those are a couple of distinguishing points for this school. A second floor plan obviously overlays the first, pretty standard. The, the one difference here on the second floor is you'll see the media center there over the academic area. And you'll also notice that we actually have a balcony on this auditorium. It was more cost-effective for us to be able to construct this with a balcony. And we've got, well, we've got a, an orchestra pit actually in this down in the front area as well. So that was something that we recently added about a month and a half ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually came with a very cost-effective way to do that. We're pretty, pretty excited about that. We think it's gonna be a very, a very unique experience here for, for the kids. And then third floor is just a continuation, again, of the academic layout there.
Not dissimilar to Stafford High in terms of the academic wing structure.
Again, if you had looked at this rendering six or eight months ago, it was very different. Actually, probably a lot more, if you will, flashy. We've dramatically changed the outside skin of the school to be much more just traditional. We did not feel that, in the community right now, that we felt like we did not wanna speak about anything that was going to convey anything other than a very traditional school design. This, again, very similar to what you would see at Forge or Mountain View. So again, we feel that this is, still maintains a great look for the school. Here's another view. This is from the other side of the school.
The gym side.
Correct, gym side.
We aren't calling high school number six, I would.
For the moment.
I mean, honestly, that's like.
That's where you don't get any fights with people.
Hey.
High School Six.
We've been calling it High School Six.
I think.
Um, I thought it was gonna, I'm sorry, I thought it was gonna be All-Stud High. That's a Dr. Taylor.
No, because our policy says you can't have, you can't be alive when you go through you.
Oh, gee.
And then this, this, this view is from back, kind of on the Trussler Road.
Thing, not choosing the colors and the team mascot.
The one thing, the one thing, so this is a view from Trussler Road. The one thing obviously we've done here is if you were to drive down there right now, you can see all the trees along Trussler. Those are to stay, right? Because we're, we're creating that nice landscaping buffer for the communities around there. But we've taken them out of this picture so you can see the school office, but, yeah.
So it doesn't actually, it wouldn't actually look like that. There'd be a whole bunch of trees there.
Correct, yeah. If you were to cut all the trees down, which we do not intend to do.
Gotcha.
View of the dining, dining area here. We've, again, kept this pretty open, fairly, we, we actually, we used to have, I guess, what we would have called a learning stair in there. We eliminated that in exchange for more efficient use of some additional classroom space that we were able to do in there for the arts and music groups. You could actually, there's some dining up on the second floor as well, and that leads right up into the media center, library area upstairs. So really a great center of the school, opening there on the other side to the courtyard so kids can take lunches out and, and sit out there if so desired. And then this is a, a view of the, the media center upstairs. Again, one of the big changes we made here, it used to kind of be a, how would you say, an askew.
You didn't have an angle to it yet.
At an angle. We've straightened that up, very straight lines, again, more traditional, efficient construction, efficient use of the space here. Again, another cost-saving measure which we'll touch on later, based on here in just a moment.
I would think it's a better safety measure. You can also have a better sightline.
Correct.
Definitely.
We felt, we felt that way as well. So just some comparisons to other high schools here. Again, two thousand one hundred and fifty students. We talked about the key distinctions of having a larger theater. We do have slightly wider corridors here, although we're not putting lockers, right, in, in this. So, but we've still maintained, I think it's a thirteen-foot corridor width is what we've gone with here. Typically, our, most of our schools have that ten to twelve foot. We felt that the thirteen would give us a little bit of flexibility in the future should we desire to do something out in hallways. Two thousand nine hundred and, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand square feet on the larger end of our schools. Not, not the largest, nor Stafford still, still holds the largest there. But again, a lot of that's due to that additional auditorium space that we've added in on this one. And the, the hallways as well have added a little bit of that space. But overall, again, you can see very comparative to our other schools. This is a little harder to see, but we talked earlier about the amount of exterior classroom-facing space on, on the school and trying to maintain a lot of that natural light, but we didn't wanna do that at a lot of additional costs. So what you'll see here is the comparison of our Stafford High School rebuild that we did to the gla, the amount of glass in high school number six. We've actually cut down percentage-wise the overall amount of glass, which again was another value engineering, cost-efficiency-saving measure here for us to do on the school while still maintaining a lot of natural light throughout the school. Overall, again, all those classrooms are gonna have good natural light coming into them. So pretty proud of that, again, very efficient, effective design here. Let's talk for a minute about high school and construction, school costs in general. In about a month, we're gonna be at a point where we will, we will have for you all some updated cost estimates. The design is coming fast and furiously down the, down the, down the home stretch here and is gonna be having some cost estimates done here over the next month or so. Just for some comparisons, some of the trends we've seen in the industry. Significant, significant increases in the overall cost to build a, an elementary, middle, or high school than what you would have seen five or ten years ago had we built at that point. The one thing you'll notice here is we don't really have good comparative numbers on other high schools. We've talked with Loudoun County and. We've talked with Loudoun County and Prince William, which are also in the process of looking at their high schools and getting ready. I think Prince William's going to be putting theirs on the, high school 14 on the street next spring. I'm sorry, this fall, and looking to start under construction just after us. I think they're at a pretty significant price tag right now.
Same opening date?
I'm sorry?
Same opening date.
Same opening date. I think they are currently at about 260, 280 million. We are not there. I want to qualify that. But they're a little bit larger. They also have certain lead and energy efficiency type of things that they, as well as prevailing wage requirements, that they are building into their costs as well. They've got a much more difficult site to work with. But again, the overall trend out there is definitely a lot of increased cost. We'll be back to talk with you on the next month about what we're seeing. So, again, to that end, we've listed out a number of things here, and I'm not going to go through all of them, but let me just pull out a couple here that we've done over the past six to eight months to try and reduce costs. I talked a little about that removal of the intersection, or change of the intersection. We estimate that's about a $3 million cost savings. We talked a little bit about the going to a three-story from a two-story. We estimated that was about $1 million in cost savings. And then, another thing that you didn't really see, but is kind of behind the scenes, there were some underground stormwater detention storage that we were able to remove, savings about $5 million. So, just right there, easily about $10, $10 to $15 million worth of cost reduction, value engineering that we've done just in the past six to eight months. Still maintaining what we believe is a very efficient, effective school that's going to serve us well for the next 60 years or plus, depending how long we decide to go with this thing.
We won't, we won't probably feel like we see those savings, right? Because the prices keep going up. So, I mean, the school is still going to cost more than what we projected it would cost originally.
Yes, I think, yes, absolutely. The trend in the construction market, as we talked about here, is definitely hot. So, but, again, we've been very diligent, diligently working over the past six to eight months to do as much as we can in preparation for bid day. Bid right, bid day right now, we are planning to go out for bid, correct me if I'm wrong, June 28?
Yes.
June 28. And it'll be about a month after that, we'll get our bids in until late July. It's when we should be hopefully...
We're contracted in August and ready to go.
Yeah. Still looking to break ground this fall. So, moving quickly, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, let's go. Liza?
Thank you. I like this design much better than the previous, the first one we showed. And I'm really excited about the 1,000-seat auditorium. I'm hoping that's something maybe that we can even, that the community might want to use, we can run it out. It could actually benefit us. Does this have solar panels on the roof?
It'll be ready.
Solar-ready. Okay, solar-ready. And, and the materials look more durable and with the longevity, so that we're not using anything bad.
Correct, yes. We've done that. We've tried to keep the exterior very consistent with a lot of traditional brick-and-mortar design that will, there's a little bit of metal paneling here and there, but the reduction of the window space and the overall reduction of that metal paneling will definitely serve us well over the coming up.
And I like the fact that that courtyard is not closed off. Much better.
Our main, that's, the team loves it. Yeah, they like it too.
Ms. Healy?
When we bid Stafford High, there were some things we wanted to do, but we had cut because we're trying to save money. So we, I think we bid it out as add-ons. Are we considering doing that for some of the things that we've taken off?
Nothing major. There are a couple of things that we're discussing from an overall cost-value perspective long-term, like some of the floors, whether or not we can go with a higher-grade floor that will last longer, or possibly even the roof, right? Possibly even the roof going with a, right now, we've got a PVC membrane roof. We've had some discussion about going to what's called a four-ply built-up roof system that is a lot more, typically more durable long-term, but has more costs upfront. So, we're talking about having a few bid alts in there that would allow us on bid day, if we can afford it, right, to go ahead and pay for that now.
Well, these weren't on bid day, these were just saying, they were potential add-ons if, for some reason, the cost came in lower as we were going along. And I think it worked pretty well, because we were able to get some additional work done that we could not foresee we would have the funds for, but the contractor bid on that as part of the bid, so they were committed to those prices. So, I would suggest, if there's anything in that list that we have eliminated, and I just, I'm not a tennis player, but I noticed that we cut the tennis courts to the minimum necessary for the program. If there's something like that, that it would be an enhancement if we could include it, if we, you know, just said that this may be an add-on if funding is available. But that also raised the question for me, are the fields, the athletic fields included in this? Because I'm assuming we're going to have the turf field, but we also had an issue at Stafford High with the practice fields. And we were able to work through that through various ways to get the practice fields, but, you know, they were not all covered in the original bid, and it presented a problem when we were getting closer to opening the school, that they didn't have what they need.
Yes.
So that's going to be in here?
Correct.
And is that, the fields going to be comparable to the fields at our existing schools?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
And how many auditoriums will we have? I know Mountain View, you know, we ended up with two, because the supervisors, believe it or not, suggested, you know, that they would pay for it. So we would just have one there. It's worked out pretty well.
One auditorium and a black box theater, which is consistent with some of our other schools.
Yeah, I'm thinking of the, like, the stadiums.
Oh.
Those fields.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
Ms. Segman?
Can you tell me what you decided as far as elevator location and quantity, especially now that we're third floor?
So there's, there's, there's two elevators technically in the school, but there's really one that's intended for the majority of the school, and I'll try to point it out to you. It's maybe, I don't know if it's easy, or do you think it's easiest to see here? It's up towards the front, the front door, to the right as you come in.
So on the south side, the whites.
The whites.
Do you want me to go down?
Second floor.
I can play Van and White.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second floor, go to the second floor.
Yeah.
Right here. This is the elevator for the academic wing.
Right there, yeah. You see that consistently in the interior? The second one is actually, right now, over in the theater to get up to the, for accessibility reasons.
Sure. And then I saw on that page where you talked about the cost-saving measures, you talked about the minimum paving and parking. And I guess my concern about what the definition of minimum parking is, especially if we're going to have, like, the largest theater, plus potentially a football or soccer game, plus, you know, indoor sports.
Right.
You know, can we accommodate all the parking needed for multiple events going on potentially simultaneously?
Yes, so we, this will still match the parking that we have at our other high schools. But what we've, what we tried to do there, and there were a couple of areas where we had some additional travel lanes and travel ways through the parking areas that we were able to eliminate to reduce that, so we probably could have written that a little bit differently. But yes, it'll still match the same number of spaces that we would have at Norstafford, Stafford High School, or any...
But I think she's making the point that we might need more spaces, because if we're going to have a thousand-seat auditorium and we have...
When it becomes overcrowded in ten years, we need more money.
So, one of the things...
Hey, I was going there.
I'm just being realistic.
Yeah, so most of our, again, keep in mind, I think it's like 800 and some odd parking spots right now. And then we have parking across the street at the elementary center. So during a particularly large event, you would have, and there'll easily be probably 100, 150 to 200 spaces across the street. If we needed, we could have close to, close to 1,000 parking spaces.
How many spots did we cut when we talk about minimizing? Or what percentage did we reduce if we're talking about minimizing?
Yeah, again, I think we could have written that better. What we actually cut wasn't parking spaces, what we cut were drive aisles to get rid of some of that, so we apologize. We probably could have written that a little bit better.
Okay. And then my last question was about, I know we had talked about strategic use of, like, the loading zones for cafeteria, and then I do like that our gym and our auditorium don't share walls. I know that was something we talked about, so I'm really grateful to see that that was able to happen.
Yeah, so one of the things we, so the loading zone, again, there's on the left, and it's kind of the left courtyard, if you will. So, that looked like to me. Right. Strategically placed right there where the cafeteria and everything is.
There's every seating, right? And then also for the theater, you'll be able to go into the backstage and the scene shop and whatnot as well.
Great for loading in lumber and whatnot.
Exactly.
Yeah, nicely, yeah.
Okay, awesome.
Awesome, thank you.
It's a lot of basketball courts. Is there a reason for four?
So, that is actually consistent with what we normally have, because the two ones that flank, the main one, are actually where the bleachers extend into. So, they are, the bleachers are collapsed during health and PE classes for there to be three courts, but normally, it's only one that's visible when the bleachers are extended.
Oh.
There's competition.
Yeah. Ms. Kai?
My questions were already answered, so thank you so much.
Ms. Austin?
Yeah, I had some people write in about concerns about parking, and I definitely, I have wanted to just hear about a parking garage, so.
I don't even know that...
You'd need to ask the county for more money for that.
That's expensive. I know, as much as our elementary schools.
I, people ask me to ask, and I thought it was, I mean, I thought it was, it's got to be worth asking anyway, just to make sure. But I only have, my biggest question's worth parking. Just to clarify, though, the building itself is, if you're looking at it, is on two floors here, but the academic wings are three floors. Three floors all over.
No, just the academic wing.
Just the academic wings are three floors. Okay, and then that cut.
Like broke two?
Yeah. So in the back here, you had mentioned Trussler Road, the Trussler Road piece here, we know that's a big bone of contention for my folks. Is that an exit-only point now, or is that still, is there still a flow in and out there?
Yeah, so the one up in the top left, that's a right-in, right-out.
So, you can only go right in, and you can only turn right out.
Oh, okay, okay, so there's no...
This right here is a right-in, right-out only entrance, so there'll be no left turns in and out.
Okay, so it's not an exit-only from the school, but it is a controlled flow...
Correct.
Of the car, okay, of the car traffic, okay, that's fine.
So we have something similar on Mountain View Road.
So there's accesses on what's now...
On the back end of their parking lot.
It's just the road that connects between the, right, between the high school and the elementary school.
Yeah, and this is, this is, so the majority of our traffic's going to be coming from the 17th side, and you can see we've built in multiple points of access, right? We learned, hopefully, our lesson from some of the other schools. Separate, separate bus loop, access point here, here, and here. And, so we feel very good about...
And that should dramatically change our traffic dynamic where there's a bus-only zone.
That was my next question.
That will, yeah. Definitely change our situation for the better.
Sure. What about the drop-offs?
A student drop-off, you've got two different options that could be used, one in the front and then the back, but most likely in the front.
Yeah, this is really set up for drop-off flow through here, this area right here.
If we have two, that's even better, because they line up and...
Yeah. Look how far they're off the road, that's nice.
Thank you, Ms. Austin, Dr. Chase.
Yeah, most of my questions answered too, just, I'm just pretty sure this is the case, we're not doing that retractable seating in the auditorium anymore, is that true?
No.
Just, I just wanted to make sure. Good question. That was all.
Cheating seating?
I think all the questions I had, it was just about student parking and traffic, and I didn't answer it. So, thank you.
I don't have any questions. This seems like a really cool design, and I'm definitely jealous about the auditorium and everything. But, I don't know, I'm really excited to see the process go on. Thank you.
Thank you. It's going to be a great school, we're excited for it. We think we've got a great team here, and we feel like we're heading in good directions.
Thank you.
Out of your hair.
Yes. I just, Jason, when we had the community meetings, what, a year or so ago?
Yeah.
You know, one of the specific topics brought up was the elevator, and I know you removed the other one, but I have some concerns if we're going to have one elevator in the academic wing, if that elevator is out of service, you know, for our students that have no choice, that are not able to walk, you know, what is our, you know, what are our options? Is there just no way we could put another elevator in there? I know it would be an expense, but...
We did reduce it as a cost-savings measure, that was definitely one of the things that we...
How much do we, how much do we save from that?
About a quarter million.
You know, a quarter million over the course of years with special needs students, I mean, I know special needs students at Rodney Thompson, there's one elevator, and when that elevator's not working, you can't, unless somebody carries you upstairs and carries your wheelchair, which is unacceptable, you can't get up, so...
My concern is not even so much for the, those students who have a permanent disability, but also for students and staff with a temporary...
Or teachers, especially. I would like to look into that. A quarter million sounds like a lot, and it is a lot of money, but, you know, we have a legal obligation to, you know, meet the needs, and I think we as well have a moral obligation. And one working elevator in a school that houses 2,000-plus students plus the staff, may not, may not be sufficient.
We have multiple elevators in all our other high schools, just curious, I don't know what...
We don't.
We don't, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't, you know, if we have an option now, you know, that we can do something better, we're certainly choosing to increase the size of the auditorium, which, of course, the community asked for that as well, but that is, to me, that's a luxury.
Is that elevator accessible?
I would see, I would see this elevator as something that would be an enhancement.
So we would have three elevators at this school, how many elevators do we have at our other high schools?
We have three, we have two.
We have one.
If we add another one, we would have three of us.
Right, but what's in the auditorium? I'd move it away from the auditorium then and put it in the academic, that's just me.
Yeah, we looked at that, unfortunately, the way that the configuration, we were trying to see if there was a way to get that auditorium elevator to also have dual purpose, and there's not a way to do that on this, with the layout that we've ended up with. We can certainly take a look. I will say...
This is just me, but, I mean, a quarter million dollars and a, how many, it's going to be close to 200 million by the time we finish, or how much more than that? Well, yeah.
So, yes...
Special needs, civil rights...
And I will say that we do have same-day elevator service contracts with our elevator company, but understood, we will definitely look and...
Can I ask why we couldn't just use this, like, lower, as I call it, elevator on theater nights? Like, why did we add one specifically to the theater? Especially because, you know, even when we wanted to expand the seating in the theater, we were told, well, you know, it's a lot of square footage and a lot of money, but now we're giving it its own elevator rather than having two in the academic wings and using...
To meet ADA code requirements.
So they're required to have it right there.
Correct, yes. So this, we looked at that very carefully, and ultimately, the conclusion was that for, to meet ADA, we were required.
Dr. Chase knows every school we went to, and I asked about multiple elevators, so it's been, you know, I know you've heard it, and I want, you know, I want it to work well for everybody, but...
Sure.
And the community, so too. This was raised at the community meeting. So I just think we should look into it.
Just give us an option, maybe it's one of those things that we can add to the...
Well, was it cut? Was that on your cut list? I didn't see that. Okay, maybe I need to look at that list again, is that...
So, just for the, giving everyone a time, it's 6:30. We have one more discussion, and we have a closed session to do before 7:00. So I'm going to give you five minutes, collect your dinner, go to the bathroom, come back in, let's get through this discussion in 10 minutes, so we give ourselves 15.
I think I'm early.
Jason, if you could help me, I'm sorry, I didn't see it in here.
I didn't see it either. Sometimes I'm frustrated with the lack of public involvement and people coming to us and I feel like maybe if there's, if we put that extra meeting back in, the public would come to us. Like, I'm not 100% sure how we could actually get them to be more involved with us and coming to us. The digital comment stuff has been minimal, the public comment things, and we still have a lot of stuff to work on that we do need their opinions and their thoughts on. So I struggle with whether it's the absence of the second meeting or the confounder of status quo, if that makes sense. That keeps people at bay, and I know we're not the most exciting venue in town. Once every month, but I think that's a bonus.
Are you trying to say that there are other boards that are more exciting than this?
I mean, somebody could throw a chair once in a while, I'm just throwing that out there. But anyway, so that's how I feel, I've been, I've been struggling with this for a while, the kyanesis, I thought it would see everyone else's feels and so. I mean, if we kept it one, I wouldn't hate it, but I don't know.
I don't think, well, Maya, go ahead.
It matters to me.
I know.
Based on why we changed it, having staff get off the hamster wheel, having us have pertinent information in a timely manner and sometimes before the meeting, which is the way it should only be done, I would never vote to change it, like my personal opinion. I don't want staff on the hamster wheel, I think it makes us look incredibly unprofessional and under whatever, when we say, well, why don't we have that information? Well, staff wasn't able to get it. Well, if we're meeting every two weeks, they're not able to get it. So I'm still where I was last year, I'm going to be this way until we can get more staff.
Ms. Austin.
I'm sorry.
Everybody does it, I'm telling you, everybody does.
I have to do it.
It's a compliment, all right?
Um.
It's just, you know, I've never had a sister, so like, I've never been, had anybody to be confused with, so it's like a new phenomenon for me. So I am in this kind of hybrid area as well, I, you know, and maybe we can invent like a meeting and a half. I think with three schools coming on board and having a lot of stuff going on with them, I would love to have a second opportunity in the month where we can actually vote on stuff and have action items rather than just a work session. But I don't think we need to have full meetings with like bringing out the ROTC and having the proclamations and like, you know, almost like a business meeting and then a full meeting, if that makes sense. And if it only has to be a work session because that's all we have on the agenda, great. But, you know, if we need to start approving stuff or deciding stuff with, you know, when we start spinning the plates for these schools, and the academies, and the, you know, all of it, just all of it, I don't want us to have to wait a full month to make those decisions or to hear feedback and. And I feel like if we did it that way, we could add public comment if there were a particular item that we needed comment on in more timely than every month. I also think that as a board member, I would appreciate having the opportunity to have twice a month to give board comments. I often hear things in other meetings, committee meetings or whatever that, that I have to remember and by the time the next meeting comes around, a lot of time has passed and it's, like, I wish I had the opportunity to get it out sooner or respond sooner, so I do miss that as well.
Ms. Ealing.
Well, for me, I think it's working well, if anything, I feel like I'm meeting more, even though they're not business meetings, they're work sessions. Plus, maybe it gives me more time to go to other committee meetings or other things going on during the month, but I do appreciate the fact that the staff only has to get this agenda together once a month because it is, you know, the hamster wheel is, I think Maya noted, trying to, you know, hurry up and get this stuff together and you can't get your work done if you're just getting stuff together to get out there. But I think what you're talking about, Maureen, is what we do with our special call meetings because we have not hesitated to call a special call meeting if we needed, you know, to vote on something or if something had to be done, so, you know, in terms of more formal.
I feel like if it's, we're going to have more to do than having routinely special called meetings, it's like, I don't want to be surprised every month, I would rather just have a meeting.
Well, I think if we got to that.
If we're going to have more stuff.
There's nothing to say that we can't change the policy. I mean, we said we were going to evaluate it, we're going to see how we're doing it and I'm basing it on, you know, my experience over the past year, which is not unlike something that we did years and years ago with a superintendent who came in from out of state and he suggested we have one business meeting and then one work session. It was pretty much the same except they were on two different days. But I'm good with it as it is, I think.
And we went to meetings and we had a board comment once.
You know, I haven't gotten complaints from my constituents that they have not been able to, you know, to get their comments out, I mean, there are, you know, sure, some people would like to come and talk to us more, but they're always free to email us or, you know, that general email, you know, goes in as.
I have not found that people have a hard time getting ahold of me if they want to discuss anything. So, and often that's to me a more effective way than coming and talking to us in the meeting because things can be resolved relatively quickly. I'm really ambivalent, I understand Maureen's point, I think we do have a lot of things coming up, but I think we can also add meetings to the calendar and say, okay, you know, we have these things coming up, these will be, you know, additional meetings on these dates and we can give adequate public notice. But I think this seems to be working, so I have no, I have no real strong feelings one way or the other.
Okay, Dr. Chase.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's working pretty well and I would say one of the things I've noticed that's happened with this change is all these town halls. So the budget town hall meetings, the, you know, redistricting town hall meetings, all of that kind of stuff, and I think it'd be very hard for staff to maintain all of that in addition to adding an extra monthly meeting for us. And I think that part of the reason that's actually been able to be put in place because it wasn't done before is because we have that wiggle room. So I'm pretty okay with where we are and I still feel like we have a lot of meetings because it sure has felt like, with the budget, I just felt like we were meeting every week from January through March or April, so every, twice a month. That's all I got to say.
You, Catherine.
I don't really have a preference, I haven't been here in the previous years, we've got a different schedule from you. Adding on to that, it's used to work for me, I like how we have the, those work sessions and then the meeting right after, so we can elaborate whatever we talked about here. Like Austin said, we haven't been here long enough to really know any difference.
I think the work sessions prior to have really probably helped you guys understand a little bit more about what we're doing, right, okay. I also feel like the schedule that we have works only for the sake that, again, staff, I like doing the town halls and the city, I like that we do the work sessions. I think it's helped us as a board be very much a stronger board that works together, you know, disagrees, agrees, but you're sitting facing each other, you know, talking it out, working it out. And I just feel like the value is in our work and I feel like we've done a lot of work this year and ready, getting us ready for three schools work that's coming online. That's also going to put us back up in the community for town halls, for redistrictings. Yeah, and so I probably think that's going to be, you know, a time factor for staff to plan for us to do it right wherever we need to do it. So, I'm not sure where I should be taking it from here. But you guys, I mean, it sounds like nobody's strongly opposed to where we are, kind of having, you know, thoughts forward about if we did this more. I really don't think, I think, you know, we made it a, kind of a, an effort to not be, to be transparent and to be, you know, giving up as much information Thomas is very good about, communicating with the public so many times and us, that, you know, things, the excitement or the worry or if a thing comes up as a worry, we have ways of handling it. They can do digital comments, you know, I see your thing and I share it, say, hey, if you want to say anything, come to the meeting or email us. And, you know, I had one person respond to me today, that's it. You know, and other than, before that, nothing. So I just feel like I'd like to stay the same way, but I'm not going to. I think, I think we should, and if we want to reevaluate.
I think we'll hear plenty from the community if we have something they want us to hear from them.
Well, so, I guess.
They will, they will be here.
I think we can look at it.
I think we're awful.
I think we can look at it again.
More accessible than I think most political elected officials.
I think we can look at this again in December because we're going to start picking the pace up again. So maybe December.
You know.
Good recommendation.
Not me, people know I was saying, not me.
In December, I think we can talk again about this and see where we are with the three schools if we want to increase, like, if the public is pushing more, then we may have to give more. It may be that we have to give more in the public space as opposed to the dais or maybe we need to do more on the dais. So I think we need to look at this again in December when the pace starts picking up.
Got it.
Sound feeling all right?
That feels great.
Okay, all right, so let's go into closed session.
I move that the school board convene a closed session at this time pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-371181 to discuss and/or consider the superintendent's annual performance evaluation and pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-371183 to discuss and/or to consider the acquisition of real property or construction of an elementary school or schools where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the board. Second.
Um, will those people say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we're in closed session.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. I'm so excited to be home in Stafford County after 20 years being up north. I'm looking forward to serving the community of Brookpoint and working with the teachers and administrators and the students at Brookpoint, and I'm happy to be in Stafford County. Thank you.
Thank you.
For our Blackhawk family that might be watching, Mr. Mergo wore the right tie today. So that's good. And Mr. Mergo won't be alone at Brookpoint. We're adding a new member to the Blackhawk family. Dr. Virginia Wright will also be joining as a new assistant principal at Brookpoint High School. Dr. Wright, please give her a round of applause. Dr. Wright joins us from Culpeper County High School where she has served as an assistant principal for the last five years. In Culpeper, she served as the school's Title IX Coordinator, providing professional learning to her staff on inclusive classroom practices, behavior management, parental relations, and has also led staff evaluations for new teachers. Prior to moving to Virginia, Dr. Wright was a high school administrator in the Tampa-St. Petersburg area of Florida for more than a decade and as a culinary arts teacher and a career and technical education department chair. Dr. Wright has a Bachelor's of Science in Management and a Master's in Business Leadership from Upper Iowa University, and her Educational Leadership Specialist Degree and Doctor of Education degrees, both from Argosy University. Dr. Wright is an active member of the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority and is excited to be joining the Stafford County family, especially at Brookpoint High School. Welcome, Dr. Wright.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor and everyone. I look forward to becoming a Blackhawk and continuing to move and become a part of the Stafford community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This concludes administrative announcements.
Okay, moving on to awards and recognitions.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Taylor. Each May, School Nurse Day is celebrated on Wednesday of National Nurses Week in an effort to foster a better understanding of the role of nurses in the educational setting. In support of this, Stafford Schools declares May 10th as School Nurse Appreciation Day. Accepting the school system proclamation this evening is Jennifer Dunkle of Rock Hill Elementary School. Jennifer, will you join us? A proclamation to recognize May 10th, 2023 as School Nurse Day throughout the school division. Adopted by the school board of Stafford County on this 11th day of April 2023.
Again, I'd like to thank Maya Dunn, Michelle Torres, Aiden Franklin, Joseph Romero, and Billy Dunlap for helping us out this evening with our color guard. Again, North Stafford High School's Air Force JROTC. They are led by Major Joe Pablon and Master Sergeant Tony Mendoza. Okay, Ms. Hall, can you do the roll call, please?
Yes, we have Dr. Chase.
Here.
Ms. Buckman.
Here.
Ms. Guy.
Here.
Ms. Halsted.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Ms. Randall.
Here.
Ms. Sigmund.
Here.
Ms. Alamon.
Here.
And Dr. Warner.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. A motion to...
Motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would request that we move Policy 3608, 3605, and 4113 off of consent and to information.
Okay. And I'll accept that as a friendly amendment. Oh, well, was that a second with that amendment? And I'll accept a friendly amendment. Okay.
And just that you said '08, '09, and?
Yeah, 3608, 3605, and 4113.
3605 and 4113. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, all those, any discussion? Changes? Okay, can you cast your votes, please? Tally the votes. Motion's approved, seven zero. Okay.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, any changes? Okay, cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven zero. Okay. Announcements of administrative and personnel appointments. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm excited to announce several personnel appointments this evening to our administrative team. And as I call your name, if you could please come forward to the podium. And once I've done saying a few nice things about you, if you'd like to say anything to the board, we'd welcome that at this time. First up is Dr. Tanya Maline, who will step into the role of Director of Student Support Services, overseeing the work of dozens of professionals who contribute to student health, development, and engagement every day. For the last five years, Dr. Maline has served as a coordinator of school social work, providing clinical supervision and professional support to our school social workers and supporting mental health awareness and intervention. Prior to this role, Dr. Maline served as a licensed clinical social worker in both Stafford schools and community health agencies throughout Northern Virginia. Dr. Maline has a bachelor's degree of science in sociology from then Mary Washington College, now the university, a master's degree in social work from Virginia Commonwealth, and was recently conferred with her doctoral degree in social work by the University of Kentucky. She also has the dubious distinction of being a graduate of Stafford Schools and an alumnus of Brookpoint High School. Dr. Maline, congratulations and welcome.
Sorry, I'm really short. Thank you, Dr. Taylor and school board. I'm excited to continue my work here with Stafford County Schools. As both a parent of two high school students at Stafford High School and alumni of Stafford County Schools, and then kind of supporting the students, the staff, and the families here in our school community to build wellness. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Maline family, you got to give us a wave so that we know where you're at. All right, very good. Thank you. Next up, we're excited to announce the appointment of a new principal in Stafford Schools. Mr. Joseph Mergo will join Stafford Schools as the new principal of Brookpoint High School. Mr. Mergo is presently the principal at Potomac Shores Middle School in Dumfries, which he opened in 2021 after three years of being the principal at Ronald Reagan Middle School in Haymarket. At Potomac Shores, he designed and launched a project-based learning program, empowered students to learn and demonstrate their knowledge through engaging activities, and he was also a frequent presenter at leadership conferences in Prince William County and beyond. He is a mentor to novice administrators and a coach to many. Throughout Mr. Mergo's career of more than two decades as a teacher and administrator in Prince William County, where he was the finalist this year for Principal of the Year for Prince William County, his home is Stafford, where he has lived for 30 years. Mr. Mergo has a bachelor's degree in science from, in education, and a master's degree in educational leadership, both from George Mason University. He's the proud parent of two Stafford School students and is excited to work in his home community, and he is a graduate of North Stafford High School. Welcome, Mr. Mergo.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. I'm so excited to be home in Stafford County after 20 years being up north. I'm looking forward to serving the community of Brookpoint and working with the teachers and administrators and the students at Brookpoint, and I'm happy to be in Stafford County. Thank you.
Thank you. For our Blackhawk family that might be watching, Mr. Mergo wore the right tie today. So that's good. And Mr. Mergo won't be alone at Brookpoint. We're adding a new member to the Blackhawk family. Dr. Virginia Wright will also be joining as a new assistant principal at Brookpoint High School. Dr. Wright, please give her a round of applause. Dr. Wright joins us from Culpeper County High School, where she has served as an assistant principal for the last five years. In Culpeper, she served as the school's Title IX Coordinator, providing professional learning to her staff on inclusive classroom practices, behavior management, parental relations, and has also led staff evaluations for new teachers. Prior to moving to Virginia, Dr. Wright was a high school administrator in the Tampa-St. Petersburg area of Florida for more than a decade, and as a culinary arts teacher and a career and technical education department chair. Dr. Wright has a Bachelor's of Science in Management and a Master's in Business Leadership from Upper Iowa University, and her Educational Leadership Specialist Degree and Doctor of Education degrees, both from Argosy University. Dr. Wright is an active member of the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority and is excited to be joining the Stafford County family, especially at Brookpoint High School. Welcome, Dr. Wright.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor and everyone. I look forward to becoming a Blackhawk and continuing to move and become a part of the Stafford community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This concludes administrative announcements.
Okay, moving on to awards and recognitions.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Taylor. Each May, School Nurse Day is celebrated on Wednesday of National Nurses Week in an effort to foster a better understanding of the role of nurses in the educational setting. In support of this, Stafford Schools declares May 10th as School Nurse Appreciation Day. Accepting the school system proclamation this evening is Jennifer Dunkle of Rock Hill Elementary School. Jennifer, will you join us? A proclamation to recognize May 10th, 2023, as School Nurse Day. Whereas students are the future, and by investing in them today, we are ensuring our world for tomorrow; and whereas families deserve to feel confident that their children will be cared for when they are at school; whereas all students have a right to their physical and mental health needs being safely met while in the school setting; and whereas school nurses understand the link between health and learning and are in a position to make positive difference every day, now therefore be it proclaimed that the school board of Stafford County hereby designates Wednesday, May 10th, 2023, as School Nurse Day throughout the school division, adopted by the school board of Stafford County on this 11th day of April 2023. Annually, the first full week in May is recognized as Teacher Appreciation Week as a nationwide effort to honor educators. In support of this, Stafford Schools declares May 8 through 12th as Teacher Appreciation Week. Accepting the school system's proclamation this evening, our Stafford Schools 2023 Teacher of the Year Jenny McCall and First Class Teacher of the Year Avery Tully. Ladies, will you join us? A proclamation to recognize May 8 through 12th as Teacher Appreciation Week. Whereas strong and effective schools are essential to the economic prosperity of Virginia and ensure that we continue to make social, technological, scientific advancements; and whereas qualified, dedicated teachers are critical to the success of our students and are fundamental to the strength of the Commonwealth, now therefore be it proclaimed that the school board of Stafford County hereby designates May 8 through 12th, 2023, as Teacher Appreciation Week in Stafford County, adopted by the school board on this 9th day of May 2023. Annually, May is recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month. It is important to recognize that mental health is an essential component of one's overall health and well-being, and that mental health illnesses are common and treatable. In support of this, Stafford Schools declares May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Accepting the proclamation tonight is Stafford Middle School Social Worker Robert Demme. A proclamation to recognize May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas mental health is part of the overall health and sustains an individual's thought processes, relationships, productivity, and ability to adapt to change; and whereas globally, nearly 15% of young people between the ages of 10 and 19 experience mental disorder, accounting for 13% of the worldwide burden of disease in this age group, now therefore be it proclaimed that the school board of Stafford County hereby designates May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month throughout the school division, adopted by the school board of Stafford County on this 11th day of April 2023. Earlier this year, Stafford Schools' work-based learning team coordinated a partnership with the IRS's Volunteer Income Tax Assistant Grant Program. VIDA is designed to support free tax preparation for underserved members of the community through partnerships with various organizations. VIDA also allows accounting students to train, volunteer, and earn work-based learning experience by supporting the Stafford community with tax preparation service. During the course of the 2023 tax season, 20... During the course of the 2023 tax season, 20 certified student preparers volunteered for six tax clinics across two VITA sites. Students spent nearly 30 face-to-face hours with clients and gained valuable experience. A total of 53 tax returns were accepted by the IRS and the Virginia Department of Taxation, resulting in a total of $87,457 in federal refunds and $18,377 in state refunds being processed. At this time, we'll recognize the students who participated in this innovative program. When I call your name, please come forward. Audience, please hold your applause until the end. From Colonial Forge High School, Noor Alda. Josu Blanco. Brandon Botang. Evelyn Dieter. Jacob Gagliolo. Jamie Garcia. Jason Hernandez Rubio. Mohammed Ibrahimie. Sabia Ijaz. Eliana Melendez. Danielle Dai. Connor Ryan. Emily Stotlinberg. Nina Toriak. Mahadi Vidula. And from Brookpoint High School, Dylan Hughes. Rebecca Marples. From Mountain View High School. Emma Mayo. And Jake Mortensen. We would be remiss if we did not acknowledge the guidance and support provided by our students by their program coordinators. Robin Althoff and Anna Killia, will you please join us? To our student accountants, this was an incredible opportunity for you to showcase your abilities and provide a great service to this community. Thank you for representing this division with professionalism and skill. To our advisors, thank you for your vision and your work to move the division forward. Your work and vision are in a direct alignment with our goals and truly elevate Stafford. Thank you. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and it is appropriate at this time to recognize this year's new National Board Certified Teachers. National Board Certification is the most respected professional certification available in education and provides numerous benefits to teachers, students, and schools. It was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to generate ongoing improvement in schools nationwide. When I call your name, please come forward. Audience, please hold your applause until the end. Michael Dodario, the Drama Director from North Stafford, from Stafford High School. Emma Tillman, a second-grade teacher from Garrisonville Elementary School. Congratulations and well done to our National Board Certified Teachers. Stafford Schools values community partnerships that allow us to support our students in innovative ways. Tonight, we'd like to recognize one of our community partners who supports student literacy each week through the PAWS for Reading Program at Drew Middle School. This program, led by Mr. John Bowman and his canine companion Kaylee, is an excellent example of the ways in which communities and schools can partner to increase student success. John and Kaylee, will you please join us at the podium? Amy, would you please join us at the podium? Since the inception of this program, Mr. Bowman has shown unwavering enthusiasm and commitment when working with the Drew community. Every Thursday, he and Kaylee serve students by providing Tier III reading support. Since their first visit to Drew in October 2022, administrators have seen measurable growth in student literacy through overall self-efficacy and reading assessment scores. There have also been notable, noticeable improvement in students' self-esteem and confidence in their abilities. On behalf of Drew Middle School and the greater school community, we thank them for their incredible service each week. Their dedication and commitment has made a positive impact in student lives. Thank you, Ms. Ivory. Stafford Schools is pleased to announce that the T. Benton Gale Middle School Aquatic Robotics Team, Twisted Waters, earned second place in the Sea Perch Regional Competition hosted by Dahlgren Nav Sea this past March. The team is now eligible to compete at the International Sea Perch Competition, which will be held May 13th at the University of Maryland. Sea Perch is an underwater robotics program that helps students develop their technical and engineering skills through real-life application. Students participating in this STEM program have the incredible opportunity to develop transferable critical thinking, problem-solving, and collaboration skills in a fun and inventive way. At this time, we'll recognize the team. Students, when I call your name, please come forward. Audience, please hold your applause until the end. Michael Smith. Eli Street. And Casey Trimble. We would also like to recognize the program's sponsors for their continuous support and guidance. Mr. Nathan Sekinger. And Ms. Denise Wallace. To our student engineers, we recognize what an incredible honor it is for our school division to be represented in these Sea Perch competitions, and we are deeply inspired by your hard work. To the program's sponsors, thank you for your continued commitment to STEM education and for inspiring our students to excel. Congratulations. Stafford Schools is proud to announce that we have been recognized once again as the National Association for Music Merchants Best Community for Education, for music education. This award recognizes outstanding efforts by teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders who have made music education part of a well-rounded education. Our schools continue to live up to this distinction each day and have recently received a number of recognitions and honored honors for their participation in state and district-level music events. Middle and high school students earn spots in these events by undergoing rigorous audition process, and elementary students were selected and invited to participate. We will recognize these students collectively at this time. As I announce each event and participating school, will the representative accepting tonight's awards please come forward? Audience, please hold your applause until the end. On behalf of the All Virginia Band and Orchestra 2023, accepting on behalf of the group is Sophia Meter from Colonial Forge High School. Will all members of the group in the audience please stand to be recognized? The All Virginia 2023 Choir, accepting on behalf of the students is Mackenzie Burgess from Stafford High School. Will all members of this group in the audience please stand to be recognized? The American Choral Directors Association Honors Chorus 2023, accepting on behalf of this group is Ella Puckett from Dixon Smith Middle School. Will all members of this group please stand to be recognized? The Elementary All Virginia Chorus, accepting on behalf of this group is Iris Torres from Hampton Oaks Elementary School. Will all members of this group in the audience please stand to be recognized? The Elementary All District Chorus, accepting on behalf of this group is Alexander Van Amerongen from Hartwood Elementary School. Will all members of this group please stand to be recognized? Next, we will recognize two very special school-wide distinctions. First, the Virginia Band and Orchestra Directors Association Honor Band Distinction is awarded to schools when both their marching band and most advanced concert band receive superior ratings at performance assessments held in October and March. This year, we are proud to announce that both Stafford High School and North Stafford High School earned this distinction. Will Mr. Mallory and Mr. Nicholas, both band directors, please come forward to accept Similarly, schools earned the distinction of being a Virginia Music Educators Association Blue Ribbon School when the most advanced band, choir, and orchestra at their school received superior ratings at their respective performance assessment in the same calendar year. The following schools earned distinction at the VMEA Blue Ribbon Schools this year. As I announce each school, will the musical directors from each please come forward to accept your awards? Audience, please hold your applause until the end. A.G. Wright could not join us this evening as these excellent educators are putting on their concert tonight. We are proud to recognize Arlene Mandalas, Molly Nisal, Carly Streenstra, and Billy Titus, the band, choir, and orchestra directors at A.G. Wright. From Mountain View High School, Corey Galt from chorus, Tom McDonald from orchestra, and Jean Welch from band. From North Stafford High School, Lindsay Long in chorus, Chris Mallory in band, and And from Stafford High School, Ron Bariclo from orchestra, Joe Eveler from chorus, and Austin Nicholas from band. Congratulations to our Blue Ribbon School designees. To all of our student musicians, Stafford Schools is deeply inspired by the wealth of musical talent in our community. We wish you continued success in your future endeavors. Congratulations. And to our music educators, we thank you for sharing your gifts with our students. Your continued support and guidance inspires them to excel. Thank you for your commitment to leadership. We're going to have the educators in the back and the students right here in the front.
Good job. Well done.
Ms. Ivory, are you saying you're ready? Okay. Bring the puppy down.
Will you please welcome this time Mr. Bowman and Kaylee from the PAWS program?
You can't stand people.
Yes.
Well, this room, we'd love to have you stand right here, and I think that we'll have to take a picture with you.
They also want to take a picture with Kim.
We don't want to get in there. It's just for the, no, it's just for the.
Yeah, we have a panel.
All right. Are you ready?
I know.
Definitely yes, because if it wasn't for you all, thank you. Yes. Yeah. Thank you.
All right, right here? Thank you.
Thank you.
I need to know where to go.
It's a great dress, come on.
Sure. So, hello, good evening, everyone. I have just a really quick update for tonight. So first, just a reminder to students that Muraki and I have worked hard to create a blog, which is linked through the Stafford County Public Schools website. So here, we're posting important information on the going-ons in the county in a way that's accessible and understandable to students. So additionally, on this blog, we've attached to each post a Google survey, which we check consistently, and we encourage students to reach out if they have any questions, concerns, or comments. And as always, Muraki and I have our emails open. So next, and I'm super excited about this, but this past Thursday, Dr. Taylor, Muraki and I had the opportunity to participate in a Warm Ones video, which will be released in the near future. So here, Muraki and I had the opportunity to talk a little bit about ourselves, about our passions, our experiences, and the position thus far, and our goals for the future. So this was so incredible, and it was a really fun opportunity. So I'd like to extend thank you to the Vinnie staff responsible for putting this together. It was so fun, and we encourage you to tune in when the video is released. So next, I just want to briefly touch on something I know I brought up last meeting, and that would be the mental health initiative that was proposed. So I'm very happy to report that this initiative is moving forward promisingly, thanks to the help of Dr. Taylor, Ms. Healy, Ms. Randall, Ms. Schultz. So today, I had an opportunity to meet with our wonderful data analysis analyst, and we've drafted a survey specifically regarding mental health, which we hope to release next week to every student throughout middle and high schools in our county. So with this information, we're hoping to gain a more thorough understanding of mental health needs in our county so that we may develop a targeted approach to tackle it as it exists in our county. Mental health is such a huge concern, and I'm so excited not to only see it improve, but also to have the ability to facilitate this improvement. So finally, just a couple quick comments. Because we are in the thick of exam season with summer steadily approaching, I just want to offer some encouragement and support to everyone as we finish out the year strong. I know it's tough. Congrats to all the seniors who are graduating. And lastly, because it is Teacher Appreciation Week, we would just like to say a huge thank you to our teachers who really are the foundation of our school system. Students, feel free to extend your thank yous to teachers for all of their hard work and effort. So if anyone has any questions specifically about the mental health initiative that we'll be launching in the near future, please feel free to let me know or send me an email. It is exam season, so I do have to go after this, but feel free to email me or ask any questions. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, and good luck to both you two girls on your exams and finishing out the year strong. You've done a fabulous job up here. Thank you. Okay, moving on to citizen comments, Ms. Hall.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, you have two people signed up to speak to this evening. Andrew Weed will be first, followed by Ms. Shannon Fingerholz.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Taylor, members of the board. My name is Andrew Weed. You actually just saw me up here a few moments ago. Um, I'm the Director of Orchestras and Guitar Ensembles at North Stafford High School. I wanted to speak tonight regarding the decisions to de-staff many of our middle school fine and performing arts teaching positions. This is a deeply troubling development for the future of music, theater, and art education in Stafford County. It's my understanding that various positions are being combined to condense full-time positions despite strong enrollment numbers. For example, at schools like Stafford and A.G. Wright Middle School, they're combining the orchestra and choir positions into one role. This makes no sense from a licensure standpoint as choral and instrumental music education are two entirely different competencies. While there may be teachers out there who are capable of this, the work of handling two programs is insurmountable, and the quality of both will suffer as a result. I know this because I was an itinerant middle school teacher when I first started six years ago, and had to endure much of what I'm describing now. It makes no sense to me how these middle school arts positions can be de-staffed after years of working to ensure each middle and high school has full-time, fully-trained arts teachers in their roles. Tonight, four Stafford schools were being recognized for earning a VMEA Blue Ribbon. One of these schools is A.G. Wright. Blue Ribbon is a prestigious honor that's incredibly difficult to earn and reflects the endless time and effort our amazing music teachers, um, put into their programs. Additionally, the NAMM Foundation recently voted Stafford as one of the best communities for music education in the Commonwealth. How can we celebrate this success knowing that these crucial full-time arts positions are being condensed? The middle school arts classes are where students learn a great deal of foundations to be successful in their artistic craft. They also learn many social and team-building skills that they would not get in their other classes. Middle school is a time when many students decide that the arts class they're taking is something that they love and develop their fundamental skills with their teacher who's an expert in their field. When students fall in love with the class, they're less likely to have truancy issues in the class before and after. I remember my own music education experience in eighth grade is what inspired me to become an educator. It was in no small part due to my teachers who poured endless hours of sweat, tears, and their own expertise into their work. Please do not de-staff these middle school arts positions because the future of success in the arts for Stafford County depends on the amazing work of our full-time choir, band, strings, theater, and art teachers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Come on, Shannon.
Shannon Fingerholz, Hartwood District. Um, I've been doing some research on Elementary 19's location. I'm still having a hard time determining a solid reason why this already-owned land in Embry Mill keeps getting voted down, especially after all the work it took to get Elementary 19's approval to match construction time with 18. The relationship with the Board of Supervisors is strained and frustrating. Getting them to approve money is a brutal 12:00 AM chess match. I don't support caving to whatever they say, but there is a point where you stop poking the bear and you just get to work. Why would we not utilize land we already have, which for years has been slated for this growing area? Other land that the school system currently has access to is too far south, doesn't have utilities, or is too small, or multiple of those. So what about the land the county actually owns? Would they gift it to the schools? Probably not. Um, so parcels, 12 acres or more. Most are underwater, actually, in, like, Lake Mooney. Inside crow's nest or related to a park. However, there is a third site just down the road from Site 2 in Embry Mill, but I'm guessing that won't work for the small percentage of folks that recently signed a petition for it not to be put in their neighborhood. There is privately-owned land, it's in the northern end of the county, um, but I'm not sure if they're for sale, and I don't know how much they would cost, but let's set that aside for the minute. Um, they're either inside, like, other residential home areas, there's neighborhoods around them, or there are really crappy intersections. There are some options there, though. So my concern becomes then time and money for those, if they're willing to sell. I appreciate thoughtful research. I also appreciate making balanced decisions based between the absolute perfect world option and the 80% solution. Staff has been working on Embry Mill's site for a while. A consultant was hired to perform site feasibility studies a while back. I'm hoping in all of y'all's closed sessions, things like timelines and cost and staff recommendations are actually considered quite hea- quite heavily. See, I'm still nervous. But from the outside looking in, something feels off. It reminds me of the bell schedule. Staff, students, and family believe that middle school should be in the middle, and then all of a sudden, they got thrown to the end, costing the school system over a million dollars, like we just had a trust fund that we could pull from. There's land, a hopeful opening date, there's community support, the Board of Supervisors' approval, but no, we're gonna do our own thing, something a little different. I can't tell us, or I know you can't tell us what happens in closed session, but at this point, I don't see a good reason why this is happening over again. The only one I keep coming back to is that some would prefer other neighborhoods stay on their side of 95. I'll keep researching because there has to be a better reason for our county than this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving along to our action items. Action item 8.01. Oh, wait, did I skip one? Oh, oh, okay, sorry. All right, moving to discussion then, sorry, I was not updated. Okay, discussion, um, for items, uh, 36?
Correct.
So these were items that were not...
All the other policies are not included, they were already voted in consent.
Right, and, and I didn't include them because most of them, the language was that it was a state requirement.
Right, right.
And so I wasn't clear what exactly was the rationale for the student promotion retention changes, um, for the graduation requirement, proposed revision adds a community input component, I wasn't really sure about that. And then, uh, so I don't know if we want to go through those two first.
Sure, we can do that.
Okay.
Okay. So, starting with, um, did you, you're talking about the policy 3605.
Right.
Okay, student promotion retention. We'll start with that one. Okay?
So, Madam Chair, um, these definitely came from, from Governance's review. These are items for the board's review this evening, and Mr. Bowling, who helped walk the Governance Committee through the 3,000 series, is here to answer any questions that the board may have.
So I just, I just didn't know what the, you know, what the point of the, um, change was and that kind of thing. I mean, it looked, like, were we doing something different before? Were we...
No, for, for the most part, so with all of our, uh, policy, uh, reviews, we assembled stakeholder groups, including administrators, teachers, uh, and staff from different departments. What we felt like, that the promotion and retention policy and, um, regulation, uh, didn't place enough emphasis on, the, the committee didn't feel that it placed enough emphasis on the effects of retention on students and, uh, the positive impacts of, of being sure that you have all the right people in the room when you're making a decision. Uh, and so we decided to delineate the, uh, if you'll look on, on page one of that policy...
And also on the regulation.
And also on the regulation. Uh, a list of all the individuals that should be in attendance, including parents, is a part of that decision. Uh, and then, uh, the rest of it was, um, somewhat cosmetic to, to also update the language because it really, while it had been reviewed in 18, it really had not undergone a, a major revision, uh, to update language in, uh, since 13 at least.
Thank you. And then, um, I didn't quite know, uh, for the graduation diplomas, um, after receiving input from the community, I wasn't quite sure what that is about.
I believe that was a suggestion of the, of the, of a board member, um, and...
Can you explain that?
Yeah. Um, what we were talking about here, the, the policy is proposed so the school board may extend the requirements for graduation with the approval of the Virginia Board of Education. That was the proposal, and my suggestion was that if we were going to extend the requirements beyond what the, um, Virginia Board of Education required, that we would receive input from the community. I didn't want the board to unilaterally change requirements without having some community input. Now, it, it doesn't, um, say the community has to approve it, but it gives the community a chance to, to have a say. So that was my suggestion there.
Do we, do we currently have requirements beyond what the state requires? I'm just, I just didn't...
No, and, and that was, my, my point was, we may not now, but with a future board, there could be that, and I wanted to, to protect the, the, um, I want to say, protect the community, but to protect the, the, the right of the community to, to have a say. I mean, we're talking earlier about, you know, community comments and response, and in this particular case, it's because we would be extending requirements that would have an impact, you know, on, on the students throughout Stafford County Public Schools.
So, Madam Chair, I can add some additional context. It is not common, but it is not irregular, for local school boards to add additional graduation requirements. A very popular one to add in the Commonwealth is a community service requirement. Presently, there is no community service requirement that is attached to the Virginia diploma as approved by the Virginia Board of Education. But a lot of local school boards find value in service learning, and they have that kind of component added to it. A decade ago, when I was superintendent in Middlesex County, which is a small rural county, it was very important that, uh, local business be a development component of their education, and there was an entrepreneurship class requirement that the local school board added to the graduation requirements in that community. So, to, to Ms. Healy's point, uh, adding a process component is a, is a nice addition to augment, um, something that you already have access to, but adding some contextual color to it is also positive.
Great, thank you.
I have a question for Dr. Taylor.
Yes.
Which I think that this has nothing to do with it, so I'm just looking for you to tell me that. But this is about graduation requirements, and so like, this has nothing to do with if a parent wants to opt the child out of an SOL.
Correct, it does not have anything, but, but it is important to, to probably, uh, think about this in those terms, about what requirements are in place that is controlled by the state and what the state allows or disallows versus what this local board may do or disallow.
Okay.
Okay. And, uh, policy 4130?
Yeah, so I just, I just had a little trouble with classrooms are neutral learning environments. And, you know, uh, Ms. Healy knows how I like to look up the definition of words, and so I, I looked up neutral, and, um, you know, it says bland, unremarkable, ordinary, commonplace, run-of-the-mill. That's not really my goal for the classrooms of Stafford County, and I think it's counter to, um, our strategic plan. So I don't know if we can come up with a different word, or if we just want to leave those concerns to the school principal, but that word, neutral, just, um, I, I just concerned that, that it isn't really what we want for our classrooms.
So, um, I just typed it in here to look, because that doesn't, I mean, I don't know what that, I mean, it does say a neutral color shade, especially like gray or beige or whatever, but the first definition is not helping or supporting either side in a conflict. Disagreement, impartial. Neutral is unbiased, unprejudiced, objective, having no strongly marked or positive characteristics or feature, devoid of sentiment. So I'm not sure that there's another word that defines it better, but I, you know, I also feel like it's probably the most, um, neutral word we could find. So, um, yeah, that was, that was wordsmithed out very, um, specifically, so I, I'm, I'm just saying that's what's here, so.
How about if y'all say classrooms are welcoming to all, or something? Because neutral does sound boring as heck, and, uh, you know, no one wants to be in a boring classroom, and I, I get what you're, where you're going at, and you want it to be neutral for not being divisive, but welcoming to all is literally welcoming to all.
But, but remember that there'll be a corresponding regulation to it that Thomas will write, so he can expand upon it as well and talk about the welcoming environment and the need for bright colors, you know, in kindergarten classrooms and stuff. So this just being the policy base, and then he still has to develop a regulation, or add to whatever regulation this has.
Why can't we just say classrooms are environments that are instructional and supportive of all students? I mean, do we have to say anything there? We want them to be learning environments that are instructional and supportive for all students. Does it have to have any clarifying language in there at all? Especially since there's a regulation that goes along with it, which I'm sure we'll go into greater detail.
Madam Chair. See, I, I looked it up, and I, I saw impartial or unbiased, and I just looked up impartial, and it says treating all rivals or disputants equally, fair and just. You know, I'm all about fair and just, so, um, I would be okay with impartial if you find neutral. I, I don't find neutral being bland or boring, but maybe I am.
I was chatting with my, my husband about this neutral and classrooms, and, and I said impartial because I read that definition as well, and, um, his response to that was, he didn't think you could be impartial about the Holocaust.
Or slavery, hello.
We're, we're, we're talking about the, the room, the physical location of the class, not, not the content of the, um, instruction. So this...
There's also, there's also the, the fact that we all recognize that there's appropriate things that go up in the classroom content-wise or subject matter-wise that no one's questioning and that the regulation won't, you know, I mean, we have civics classes, we have classes on American history that have to have the pictures and all that other stuff. I mean, I, I don't know about impartial or neutral, I'm not, but yes, I would like to qualify, I've asked for the qualifier to be in there. We've sort of beaten this horse a lot. Um, we've, we tried to stay at the 300,000-foot view so that the regulation could be a little bit more precise and allow the principles, the autonomy and the structure that they need. So if, I mean, I'm, I would like, I'm partial to having a word in there. Even if, even if that word is impartial.
But, but thank you for the clarification, for, for the thought process that went into that. Thank you.
I think the intent was that this be a compromise to having a whole drawn-up policy, and I think if we can...
Choose the word.
Compromise on an adjective, if you have a preferred adjective, make a suggestion.
I, I was happy with the suggestion that Dr. Warner made, so, um, but, but, you know, we'll bring it back, and some of us will vote for it and some of us won't. It's okay.
And Madam Chair, your Governance Committee meets on Thursday to revisit this as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Good deal. Thank you.
Okay.
Moving on to action items. Action item 8.01, adoption of a resolution to nominate a school board member to serve on the Regional Board of Directors for the Academy of Technology and Innovation at the University of Mary Washington, the Regional Lab School. I had reached out to Dr. Taylor when he first asked us and said that I would be interested. And just, um, just this morning, or afternoon, um, Dr. Warner reached out to me, said she was interested, so I think we have someone to sit and an alternate.
I think Ms. Sigmund has indicated she was interested as well.
Okay. I lost a committee, so I had some time.
Oh. Okay.
I only have one, so it was really just because I had time.
Dr. Towery, for the record, you requested one name, and you now have three.
I know, this is great.
Just cruel.
This is a bounty.
Okay, so we need a motion.
I, I will support, um, Ms. Randall in this position. Um, I make a motion that, uh, Ms. Randall be the school board representative on the lab school.
A second. Okay, cast your, cast your...
Do you have to vote for the alternate as well?
Yeah.
I will. Motion passes seven to zero.
All right.
Thank you, Dr. Towery.
So, Madam Chair, if, if you have a moment, and it may please the board, Dr. Towery does have a brief, just overview presentation. It might be a good opportunity to educate some of the public on the Academy of Technology and Innovation at Mary Washington and some of what the board is just agreeing to give some input on, so.
It is, it is very brief, just gives a little bit of an update on the progress we've been making since I've shifted into the role as we continue to work towards planning this. So, kind of to ground the work, as you know, in the state of Virginia, we've often had alternative education settings, both that are either discipline-based or only accessible to students who kind of score or perform in the highest of the highest of the tiers. And we haven't historically had a lot of alternative and different types of learning environments beyond some of those things. So, one of the things that's kind of exciting about this is providing some additional learning opportunities and settings that we can pilot through the laboratory school and then hopefully develop some successful practices that you can disseminate out into additional schools in the region. So, as you know, from the planning grant that we proposed in the fall, we're looking at designing the school around this kind of reciprocal relationship between computer and data science, and really looking at providing opportunities for students in grades nine through twelve to see how those concepts are then applied to different content areas. So, one of the things we've been trying to be really intentional of is, we already have a couple different programs in Stafford and in some other localities that hit into some of the, you know, we've got the Cyber 4+ program, the IT Stat program, some of those different types of programs. We're trying to build something a little bit different here, both in terms of building in the data science component, which I don't think really exists much anywhere in the region yet. It's a, it's a new and emerging field. And then also providing some opportunities so that kids who may not see themselves necessarily as a computer scientist, but really love digging into historic preservation or, you know, graphic design can start to see how they can leverage coding and data science to amplify and augment their skill sets in those and become very marketable individuals. Another, another thing I want to highlight for the board is, as we've continued to build this work, we've really been grounding it around these three pillars of providing innovative K-12 experiences, supporting the development of high-quality educators, and benefiting the broader community. And I'll unpack those a little bit so far, as we've had some initial focus groups with members of the University of Mary Washington, regional superintendents, et cetera. And then, as I've been able to get out to some of the different board, boards across the region, kind of taking input from those to pull into this. So, one of the things we've been hearing in developing that ninth-through-twelfth grade experience is the emphasis on interdisciplinary project and problem-based learning, really providing opportunities for student ownership as part of this. We know this is really important as students get ready to go out in the world, that they know how to own a project and see it from start to finish. And then also that technical piece of internships and certifications, right? So, some of the things we've been discussing have been kind of eight weeks of instruction, and then you might, for that last week of a quarter, do some sort of field experience where you either are getting out in the community, or you've got a, a local problem of practice that's brought in from community members that students can work on in teams to come up with solutions for. In terms of the future educator experience, we're really looking and working closely with the College of Education to see how we can provide really rich future educator experiences for intern and practicum students, both exploring possibilities of providing these future educators with exposure to classrooms across the five school divisions that are part of Planning District sixteen. That would give future educators both rural, suburban, and urban experiences to really strengthen their practice. And then really pairing them with high-quality teachers who understand how to do cross-curricular instruction so that you understand how history and science play together, English and history. We have on here the Professional Development School model, which is kind of the concept of a teaching hospital, but applied with education, right? So, hopefully you have some professors from education who will be on-site some at the school and provide mentoring and coaching along with your teachers at the lab school. Another thing we've been talking about, and these are just a few ideas that have come up in some of the conversations, is how do you leverage the lab school to really benefit the broader community, right? We anticipate being able to serve approximately four hundred students from across the region. So how do you find ways to kind of spill over what's happening there to reach a broader segment of the population? So some of the concepts that have come up is maybe developing summer programs for kindergarten through eighth-grade students. Those could potentially be led both by College of Education students and maybe even your upper-level high school students partnering with teachers to get that experience. Tutoring has come up as a possibility, demonstration site, and research and evaluation. So, getting to the technical pieces, which you have heard some of, but to kind of unpack a little bit more of the details as we keep moving forward. We do anticipate each grade-level cohort having about a hundred students from across the five school divisions. The planning grant suggested that that would initially be allocated by population percentage across the region. And of course, with having a member of the board on the governance board, those final decisions will be made once that governance board is assembled. And then, as state law dictates for laboratory schools, we will be looking at a lottery selection for participants if we have a higher number of applicants. So, really looking at designing this in a way that it's open to as many students as possible, and then the state has that lottery process in place. I know we highlighted this a little bit in the fall, but this is kind of the braided funding approach we're looking at using. So, as you know, we have the planning grant right now. We're looking at basically applying for the lab school application. It has to be submitted a full year before you plan to open, so early July is when we hope to submit. Right on the heels of that, we will be looking at submitting the second round of grant funding, which will include a startup and operating grant. And then we'll be looking at local contributions, much the way that, probably not quite as likely for CGS, but some of the other governor schools and Code RVA include a portion of that. So, we're very strategically looking to build out a budget where we will, will get that below the lowest PPE, the per pupil expenditure of the five school divisions, to make sure that's competitive. And then, alternate revenue streams, so trying to build out robust business partnerships and other things to find ways to augment funding. So here's just a brief timeline, so you have an update on what we're looking at. I've kind of already highlighted some of these pieces. As you know, this spring, summer, working on that governance structure, the academic operational design. And the summer, submitting that lab school application, those grants. By fall, well, it'll be recruitment time for that first cohort of students. And then, in the spring, it'll be staff recruitment time, and really that end-up curriculum writing. And then, in the fall of '24, you'll open with that first group of ninth graders. So, you all have already done these steps, so I'm gonna skip over this slide, but you, you've got that there. So this, this will provide a good opportunity for the board to provide input as we keep moving forward with the design. And I think you have my contact information, but if you need it, there it is. That's a new phone for the lab school, so, thank you.
So can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So, I, this was presented, when it was initially presented, as not costing us anything, that it was just going to, and, and I just want to make sure that that still is going to be the case, because, you know, our governor's come up with lots of interesting education ideas, but currently I'm looking at a shortfall in my budget. And so, it's great to come up with this idea, but I want to make sure it's not going to cost us anything.
Ms. Segman.
Yes.
I apologize if you said this and it just went straight through. Is this intended to be a full day?
It is, I did not say that, and it is intended to be a full day.
So then, I guess my question becomes, how do we round out the student experience outside of the, you know, the seven-to-three school day, seven-to-two school day? As far as sports and extracurriculars? Are we able to provide school meals, especially for our free and reduced lunch population, things like that?
So, one of the things on my to-do list is to build out the nutrition plan. That has to be a component of what we submit. And in terms of sports and athletics and those sorts of things, essentially, students will still be able to participate through VHSL sports activities, et cetera, at their zoned high school for all participating divisions. So there also may be some ways to build in some different opportunities within the school, like robotics clubs or different things like that. One of the things I've been kind of looking at exploring would be maybe some graphic design types of electives that would be kind of aligned with the theme, but also provide kind of more of that fine arts component to it. But, again, I'll kind of go back to, those will be parts of what the governance, governing board will be able to weigh in on as, as decisions are made on those sorts of things. So.
Thank you. Does anyone else? Ms. Guy?
I, this is, okay. I just understood just now, because I understand your position is, you know, the Academy of Technology and Innovation at University of Mary Washington, no longer at Stafford County schools. I just figured this out. Like, we were happy for you, so I thought you were just like, moving offices. Okay, so I'm a...
She's gonna need a puppy, just for the record.
I'm slightly sad. We can, we can move on.
We can bring Kaylee back, that'd be great.
I just did not understand at all.
Bring that puppy back.
She's gonna need Kaylee.
I miss you, goodbye.
I'm right down the road.
And, and I will take your husband as the second person or whatever, like consolation, but I just didn't know. I, it's okay, but I like him. No, I mean, you're great, I'm sorry, that came out wrong.
I'm cutting your comments off.
Cut her mic.
Turn it off, push the button.
I like you so much, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Towery.
Reach out, reach out if there's additional. Thank you.
Thank you. We have adoption, oh wait, we didn't adopt the resolution, did we? Oh, did, did it mean, yeah. Approval of the elimination of the employer portion of the June twenty-twenty-three health benefits transfer to the Health Benefits Fund. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or conversation? Do you, Dr., am I understanding?
We discussed this in the Fab C, and when we discussed it, we talked about perhaps including something about returning the funds to the state if the, returning the funds to, the money to the fund if the state makes good on the shortfall. And I didn't see anything about that in, in the write-up when I read it.
Yes, you're, good evening, so yes, you're correct, Dr. Chase. We discussed that if the additional state funds from the VDOE hold harmless from the calc tool error do come into play, or do get approved in, in late June or July, then we could technically kind of reverse this and not actually eliminate this June transfer. And so that very easily, if you guys want to make that addition to this, you are correct. That was talked about at the Fab C, and I think that's a great idea. The likelihood of that is possible. I think the timing of that is questionable, so I will have to look, I think when we first started talking about this with the Fab C, it was more likely that we were thinking mid-June, before we run payroll and before we would eliminate this transfer. So now that that timeline got pushed back, which is why I didn't include it and I should have clarified that, I apologize, but, so it's not looking like we'll be able to actually stop that elimination in time. We, I can explore going back and restoring the funds and, from an accounting stance, what that would look like.
Okay. Ms. Healy?
I, I too shared your question, Dr. Chase, and when we went over the agenda review, I had asked that we put something in here, what would happen if we didn't need them for the, the operating. I, I would want to make sure that we have something in place that would allow us to send them back if we get that hold harmless later, because we do not want this to be identified as potential carryover funds that would be perhaps lost in the wind. And, and also, I do want to point out, I saw in one of the newsletters or bulletins, there's so many floating in space, that the employee portion is going to go up five percent effective July, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
For the health benefits. So, I don't want to be taking a, even though this, this doesn't have anything to do with the employee portion, if we in fact, you know, are putting too much money in there, then I think we should look at adjusting, you know, what we collect, both from the employer and the employee, because looking at the, the math, if I'm doing it correctly, if we can, don't need to put in one month of air share, then that's eight-point-three percent of what we put in for the year. So I think we need to be, you know, looking at, at that as well. But I would support, you know, a motion that says if it's, you know, if we do get that funding, because that's the sole reason for this. Is that correct? Is that, that, that VDOE error, is that the basis for doing this now? If, if in fact, we receive that money either before or after the end of the fiscal year, that we will make this whole or bring it back to the board, you know, for, for something else?
That is a large portion of it. So if we do not get that additional one-point-five million in FY twenty-three, so this is not touching twenty, FY twenty-four, just to clarify, so this is strictly looking at FY twenty-three, because the calc tool error impacted twenty-three and twenty-four. So we were expecting a total of two-point-six when the calc tool was originally leased, as an increase to FY twenty-three, and after the error, went down to approximately one-point-one million dollar increase. So in order to not have to do this, things will have to go our way and we would need that additional one-point-five from the state.
Well, we should be counting on it for next year, should we? I mean, by the time we heard about that error this year, we have to cover.
Correct.
Because we had made our plans. But I don't think we can say we have to cover it for next year when we made our budget after we were aware.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, completely separating twenty-four and twenty-three, because there were just two pieces of the calc tool. It impacted our twenty-three budget and our twenty-four, as what we thought we were getting as an increase to twenty-three. And so if the state went back and corrected the calc tool error for twenty-three, then we would get an additional one-point-five million dollars in twenty-three. That would likely eliminate the need for this deferral or elimination of the June transfer.
Okay, so if that's one-point-five, why are we not putting in two-point-one? That's six-hundred-thousand-dollar difference.
Honestly, so we're still tracking the budget very closely, and I would recommend still doing the full two-point-one, even though the calc tool error was...
Yeah, I don't want to go to jail, so I'm...
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I know, but we really need full disclosure, though, because basically what we are doing is taking money out of a fund that we had put in, and not just any fund, but the Health Benefits Fund, which I think we have a fiduciary duty with respect to that. I don't think there's any issue with being overfunded, but then again, if it's overfunded, then let's look at what we're charging everyone. Just taking that money out and using it for, for something else. If it was just the VDOE, you know, it would be one-point-five, but we're saying, well, and, you know, we want to cover some more. So, let's be transparent as to what we're gonna be doing with this money.
Yeah, absolutely. So our, our total compensation and benefits were projected to be over two million dollars over budget for FY twenty-three, and that's what we talked about at the mid-year report and during the budget, as we've seen an increase in our experience level of our teachers, our retention has been better, and who we've hired have actually been more experienced. So, in the past, where we've seen our, we might have retirees of teachers and then we replace them with younger teachers, we were seeing a significant trend and significant savings every year from that over the last five to ten years. We actually, with the teacher scale implementation that we did, we saw that start to tick back up the other way, where our average experience started to increase, which means, on average, our teachers that were coming here and we were retaining were actually costing more than the teachers that were leaving us. So we started to not recognize the, the savings that we budget each year for salary lapse.
That's for this year, that's not going to be an issue next year, because we've already budgeted that.
We corrected, we've corrected that.
But this is a troubling trend that we need to be paying attention to, because on the surface, this would be a positive thing, that our, our teachers are becoming more experienced. And of course, there's a financial consequence to that, but what is troubling is, is that we are getting these teachers from other jurisdictions, not, not keeping our, our staff per se and growing them over time. It is because we are pillaging other jurisdictions for their experienced teachers. It is because we are pillaging other jurisdictions for their experienced teachers, and that is a troubling trend and tied to the competition that we're in and the national teacher shortage.
I think it's a joyful trend.
Yeah, because we get pillaged, too. They'd be pillaging us.
Yeah.
No, but we're, if we're getting more experienced teachers, then good for us, because we need the best experienced teachers we can have in Stafford County public schools.
Well, and we also need people to stay in the profession, and for this to be an attractive profession, so that we are not necessarily having to recruit from other places, but that we're retaining and growing our workforce. And right now, that, that is a challenge that we're facing, and our, our less experienced teachers are being replaced by more experienced teachers in other jurisdictions. That's a short-term solve to our issue. It's a long-term crisis.
Okay, Ms. Segman?
So our budget request for this year included a $12 million contingency reserve fund that was not funded. If we had that reserve fund, is this the type of thing we could have borrowed from ourselves and replenished, or at least used?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So should we come up with a, a, an amendment to the motion, a friendly amendment? I'm just trying to think about what the, Ms. Healy, can you help me with the wording here? Something, yeah.
When Ms. Hall said you had a question?
I, I was just gonna say, if, if we'd had that $12 million that we had asked for, that is something that, because I know there's like certain pots of money that we can only use, but that money would have, could have easily crossed over, we could have sort of gone back and forth with that, correct? Is that what I'm hearing? That would have been sort of a acceptable way to use that money?
Yeah, so it would be building a contingency on our operating funds. So right now, we only have about $500,000 that we set aside each year for unknown expenditures that pop up during the year, or for increased expenditures that we were not expecting. That is like a quarter of a percent of our total budget. It's a very, very small, minimal amount of our overall budget. We need over time to probably start building that up, but, but right now, we have a lot of competing needs. So, so yes, setting aside an additional reserve would help us, give us a little bit of wiggle room if we have these unknown expenditures pop up, like an increase in salary and benefits of $2 million.
Or a cockroach infestation at one of our middle schools.
Yes.
There's that. Okay, let's go back to the wording for, um...
Yeah. So, uh, let's see. Move that we approve a resolution to hold back the employee portion of the health benefits.
Employer?
Employer.
Employer, thank you. Employer portion for the month of June?
Yes, ma'am.
For June. But with every effort being made, if the state corrects the calculation error or holds us harmless, that we will make every effort to return those funds to the Health Benefits Fund.
I'm not sure that's going to work by itself, because the correction is 1.5, 1.5, 1.6. And whether it's, if the correction is 1.5 and we're holding back 1, 2.1, then there's a $600,000 that it appears we're going to need. So how about if we consider saying that, that we approve holding it back for the month of June, and if in fact, we do get this extra funding, that it come back to the board to make a decision as to how those funds should be allocated? Because by then, you'll know more about where we are. I mean, if we're desperate somewhere else, we're going to want to apply it. But then we'll know more of what our options are. Are we able to do that with the, um, you know, making commitments by the end of the fiscal year?
So we would have to do it as an accrual, probably, because I think your timelines are unfriendly, uh, coming towards the end of the fiscal year. And, and the state budget also could be adopted after the start of the fiscal year, which would be a crisis.
Well, my, my concern is primarily that this is done out in the open, that everyone understands it's fully transparent, you know, what we're doing with this funding. I have no concern about the Health Benefits Fund not being fully funded, because I know that's probably significantly well over what it will need. But I just don't want to be, you know, taking this, in effect, a loan that we're not going to pay back without having it, the full discussion and disclosure and, and, and voting on it. So I, I mean, that would, that would alleviate my concern.
I don't know who made the motion, so, um, wasn't me. Ms. Hall's dead. What is, right?
You want me to remember everything you just said?
Just say, I'm, I'm okay with that friendly amendment.
I'm okay with the friendly amendment that she just made. I approve of every word she said. No, I do.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second. A friendly motion is what we're voting on right now. So, cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, 8.03, approval for a purchase in the amount of 254,386 of Tyler Drive tablets for school buses using a vendor credit. Good evening, Mr. Baldwin.
Motion to approve.
Okay, can I get a motion? Thank you. And can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Does anybody have any questions about this?
Well, I, I, I will tell you, my concern is the software cost. So each one of these tablets, it will cost $315 a year for each one of those tablets. So that's about $51,000 the first year. The tablets last five years. So we will be spending $256,000 in software for $254,000 worth of tablets. So I'm a little concerned about the ongoing cost of these, and are we committing, like, yes, we're being given the freebies this year, but then in five years, we're going to be in the hole for probably well over half a million to keep this going.
Probably have to buy new ones by then, it'll be cheaper.
That's what she's saying.
Maybe, yeah.
But the cheaper is the part she's worried about, too.
Is there any cost savings to us by having these tablets? Does it, does it, how does it benefit us?
Well, it definitely benefits us on a safety matter, because it allows real-time tracking for the tablets. It allows turn-by-turn for our drivers. There's opportunity for our time, time entry for our drivers. And there's also a portion for student tracking later down the road. So there's definitely a, a cost saving in terms of the safety factor with our drivers and our students.
What, what does the upkeep of them, what, what does that entail? Like, what's $315? I, and not to put any more on our IT folks, but is it...
So it is basically, um, I look at it as the, the data tracking, because it is GPS-enabled, and so it carries its own SIM card, so it's like a cellphone. So we pay a monthly fee, and that's kind of what that 315 does for that tablet. It's a self-supporting tablet that the drivers will be able to take on and off the bus. It carries all of the information in a closed system where we can upload our routes, student information from that standpoint. So that is done through the GPS, I'll sell you, sell your side.
I'm sorry, just one more question.
Go ahead.
How many buses? Why do we need 142?
Well, actually, right now, we have 45 that we've been utilizing as a pilot, and this would be an additional cost. And so you would want to have enough tablets to fill the number of buses or routes that we service, so that we would have equal service. And so while 208 would be our total tablets that would not fulfill the total routes, because our total routes were around 240 that we serviced for the entire school system. So we would still have to do some planning and put those tablets on the most essential buses. Primarily, we're looking at drivers that are new drivers, that are new to the area. Uh, we would definitely want that on that bus, some of our longer routes, where students and our mapping are, there are longer routes. We want to know where the bus is and track in our students.
Ms. Guy?
Um, so one of the reasons why I was excited for this is because, um, from, from my understanding, and I'm, I'm bringing it to you guys for clarity, and so the public understands. So for my household, if, if it's happening to me, it's happening to other parents as well. I look and see where the bus is to know when it's late. And if I don't see my bus leaving Brookpoint by a certain time, I know we're late. But sometimes I won't see it, so then I'll call Transportation, and then they have to figure out exactly what I'm talking about. And then they'll say, okay, we'll get on it, and it takes about 30 minutes for me to see the update of the new bus, or the sub-bus, or whatever. And you're saying with this tablet now, it doesn't have to be manual, and those adjustments can be made within a few minutes. So when I do log on and check, it'll probably be accurate.
Correct.
That's what this is giving us, that we don't have now, because we're doing manual stuff.
Yes, yes.
I wanted, I wanted to add that, to build on what you said. I talked to a couple of drivers, and what they explained to me on why this would be a benefit is, let's say my bus breaks down, I'm stuck on the side of the road, they call Susan and say, I need you to cover Maureen's route. Susan would have to be like, okay, well, I'll be at Hampton Oaks in 10 minutes. She would have to go into the office, or someone would have to run her out a paper sheet with her route on it, my route on it, and then she'd be driving around with all these kids. She has a tablet, they just push the route directly to her bu, to her bus. She doesn't need a paper, she doesn't need a printer.
Correct.
It's just there.
Yes.
And if we're picking up kids on the side of the road, we've had some accidents where we've had to send a replacement bus out. The person is going to get the route en route, and I feel like that alone is worth it.
Any other questions?
Yeah. So are we saying that we won't need as many people employed at the main office because we don't have as much for them to do?
We didn't say that.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out what exactly, if somebody doesn't have to print stuff out and somebody doesn't have to answer the phone, then I shouldn't need as many people there, okay?
But that printing out and stuff is also being done at the schools.
Right. Um, and then the other thing I would, would just sort of say is, twice since I've been on this board, we have had to mid-year increase bus driver salaries. And I'm like, where does that money come from? So I, 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 I won't support this, but I certainly understand that other people are in favor of it.
I want to add, because the, the point that Ms. Segman and Ms. Guy both bring up is, is really the most critical piece, which is we can push down real-time updates to those drivers, and they can go on to that route and complete it, even though it wasn't their assigned route. So, um, it is completely accurate that right now, we literally hit print, and it sends the route sheet to the school, and the school has to run it out to the driver. Driver is waiting for that route, um, and then they're having to reference a paper route sheet to know where to turn and where to go for, for the, uh, the actual bus stops. This actually pushes it down to that device, so the, um, make, or sorry, the Transportation Department can say, hey, bus 162, we're going to load the route there. They can log in from that tablet. It pulls up that route that now wasn't their assigned route, they're now the substitute driver for that route, um, and then they're able to, to move on right away. That's where we can create efficiencies, and it shortens the time. So in the past, where we have a driver and it's a 20-minute delay, we're now paying that driver 20 minutes of, of pay. So a quarter of an hour, you know, plus, a half an hour, pushing that, of additional pay that we're having to wait for the, kind of the paperwork side of that. We're now, we can do that instantly and push those down. So, um, it's, it's hard to put a dollar directly to the amount of how many times this happens, but there's definitely an efficiency there.
Go ahead.
So with these increased efficiencies and the fact that we can do this in real time, is there any chance that we'll be able to condense our bus routes?
So we are definitely looking at that. We have a, uh, some time set aside at your June work session for some proposed bus schedules for next year and bell schedules that, that would look at this. This is a component. Um, this board routinely receives complaints from drivers and from constituents about a number of issues. The things that they receive complaints about from our drivers, time and attendance irregularities, this solves that. They routinely, you routinely receive complaints about safety and questions about where the buses are physically located. This solves that. And in terms of efficiency, one of the things that would contribute to us running more efficient routes and limiting some of those paper processes, this helps this tremendously. So that's why it has my recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes six to one. Um, with Dr. Chase's a no. Okay. 9.04, adoption of proposed amendments, 3106, 3202, and 3401. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, I've got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Are there questions? No questions? Okay. Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to zero. Superintendent reports and comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's here. Teacher Appreciation Week, graduation season, end-of-year events and celebrations. It's an exciting time to be in Stafford County Public Schools. Uh, I would like to thank our very hard-working teachers, teachers, paraprofessionals, counselors, and celebrate you during Teacher Appreciation Week. Our staff has had a great year, and we're excited to, to close out this year with a, with a pretty exciting Teacher Appreciation Week. I would like to thank one of our sponsors, Chick-fil-A, uh, which provided an entree to all of our teachers in Stafford County this year. We also are very proud of several of our programs that are in the education and development space in Stafford County. Here in Stafford, we have a Teachers for Tomorrow program, which helps to develop future teachers to come back to Stafford County schools. And the reason I bring this program up particularly is because next week, we will present four students with the Stafford Education Foundation Future Educator Scholarship, uh, as well as an intent letter to hire some of our graduates, should they pursue education and go get a degree and come back to work in Stafford County upon their successful completion of their program requirements and licensure. Uh, we also have Nurse Appreciation Day coming up tomorrow, on Wednesday. We are thrilled to recognize our nurses who are silent heroes in our schools that help countless children to care for them on a regular basis when they're maybe not at their best. And to dovetail with that, earlier this morning, we hosted the Governor of Virginia at Stafford High School to talk about a pretty important issue, not just in our community, but throughout the Commonwealth and the country, and that is how we can combat the use of fentanyl and synthetic drugs in, in our community. It has become a very serious issue. The number of overdoses, as we learned today, have skyrocketed, not just in our country, but in the Commonwealth in particular. It's pretty alarming. Uh, I would like to thank the, the Governor, the Lieutenant Governor, and the Attorney General, as well as our local delegation of members from the General Assembly, as well as members of the General Assembly and members of the Cabinet throughout the Commonwealth for coming to Stafford High School today and helping our students to receive revive training, uh, which is a training protocol that has been developed by our Department of Health to administer Narcan, Naloxone, which is the, which is a combative medication and support for, for a fentanyl overdose. Very scary stuff, um, in our community, but this is important and dovetails with some of the safety, uh, family safety series that we have had that have been ongoing. Speaking of which, um, we have the, the last couple's family safety events coming up. Uh, tomorrow, we will host a water safety session just in time for summer at Mountain View High School, and on May 22nd, a mental health session in here, the school board chambers, on 31 Stafford Ave. Both events start at 6:00 PM. They are free to the public, uh, and we hope that you can come. Um, we will also rerun some of this series next year as well, because, uh, these are very important topics on how we can improve safety in our community. Very excited about some of the things that we have done in terms of recognizing our fantastic staff for the years of service that they have given in five-year increments to our county. staff for the years of service that they have given in five-year increments to our county. We just recognized last week, our Persons of the Year, our Teachers of the Year, Principal of the Year, Service Staff of the Year, New Teachers of the Year. We're very proud of everything that they have done. We even recognized our very first SRO of the Year this year. But what we have coming up is pretty exciting stuff. In addition to our high school graduations, we will have our teacher graduation next week, our retirement ceremony, where we recognize those that are retiring from Stafford County Public Schools. On May eighteenth, we invite all of our graduating seniors to return to their Stafford Elementary Schools, where they can participate in our Senior Walk Ceremony. This is a pretty exciting time where our kids can reconnect with the walls that they used to walk as young people. And we want to thank Ms. Randall for being a, a large part of making that tradition real in Stafford County. We do have a number of ceremonies coming up that I would like to bring to the public's attention. Our Phoenix Center will be the first in our graduation rotation this Thursday at May eleventh at six P.M. at the Phoenix Center, which is located at the Stafford campus of Mary Washington. Will be our first graduation ceremony, followed by our CGS Senior Recognition Program, which will be this Sunday, yes, Mother's Day. On May fourteenth at five P.M., the Stafford Schools will be recognized. So Happy Mother's Day, mothers, and congratulations to our CGS seniors. Brookpoint and North Stafford High School will be at their respective schools on May nineteenth at seven P.M. That's a, that's a Friday night, coming up next Friday night. And Colonial Forge and Stafford High School will be Saturday, May twentieth, at eight A.M., followed by Mountain View High School, Saturday, May twentieth, at eight-thirty A.M. We've split up our graduations. We're having a couple on Friday and three on Saturday. We're hoping that this helps out our Sheriff's Department with some of the traffic in our community, to make sure that our emergency vehicles can get through the streets of Stafford safely. A lot of exciting things, not just for our graduating seniors, but our fifth graders will participate on, in Dare Day on May twenty-third. Very excited for them. We are so thankful for our partnership with our Sheriff's Department. The Stafford County Sheriff's Department puts on a fantastic event for our fifth graders to help make sure that they enter middle school on the right foot, drug and alcohol-free, and ready to learn. Throughout the summer and throughout the spring, we've been hosting some mobile enrollment festivals. If you have a children who will be turning, or a child that'll be turning five, or children that are of school age, we encourage you to attend one of our mobile enrollment festivals. We have information that is on our website and we can even set an appointment if one of those mobile enrollment festivals is not fitting into your schedule. Our next one is on Tuesday, May twenty-third at six P.M. at the Porter Library, so we hope that you join us. We also have summer programs that will be beginning at the end of this month. There are still several seats that are available, so I encourage anyone who is looking for exciting summer programs in the Great Learning Adventure this summer to log on to our website at StaffordSchools.net and check out all that we have to offer or reach out to your school's principal. This is a fun time of year, but we encourage all of our kids and families to stay safe out there. And thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Ms. Hallsted.
Okay. I didn't come with a big, long computer. You're lucky. She clapped. So I usually have my comments written down, but tonight, so I, you know, I was going to start with something, I'm a little bit longer with something that I want to say, but, you know, I think it's important to note that everyone on this board gets the, the urgency of building our schools and whatnot. That's not up for debate. And we are exceptionally grateful to the community for coming out and for advocating for us. And for those of us who maybe don't have the opportunity to under, to, to get into, and I, and we've, you did such great research, so I appreciate that.
I know my mind hurts.
I know. But I, but I, but I want you to understand that for us, it's a matter, you know, there's been such improper planning in the past. And we've, we're so far behind with stuff. But for myself, I would like to put out there that it is so troublesome to me every day to think of the amount of time that our children spend on a bus coming from one end of the county to another. And I get it, kids sit on buses for a long period of times, but we are becoming the largest chokehold spot, or have become, on ninety-five, so between ninety-five and whatever. And every time our buses get on that roadway, I, I don't know who's on the road with them. I don't know if they're on drugs, I don't know if they're drunk. And so for me, we should actually be demanding, and our Board of Supervisors should see the urgency to get our schools built closer to the homes of the kids who are on the buses the longest, who are driving and have, we're just increasing the odds for bus accidents. I keep reading these articles about high-speed chases in Stafford County and it's, I'm struggling to understand, you know, they're not waiting for their high-speed chase for our buses to be off the road. So, so for me, I feel that we should be, we should really be dedicating the time and the energy and the effort into making sure that our decision is robustly based on the safety of our kids, on the, on moving our youngest and most vulnerable learners closer to home. That's for parents, that's for a whole bunch of different reasons. But I just wanted to say that much on it. I just have a couple messages for our eleventh graders, rising seniors as, as we know them. Next year, I hope that you find in your souls that, that the, the whole world is awaiting you. It's not awaiting your GPA, it's not awaiting your, necessarily your prom dress or your memory, it's awaiting you. So put as much time, effort, and energy as you can into making memories, to being a part of the moment. Try not to think too far ahead of the game, because it gets really overwhelming really fast when you do. If you already know where you're going, good for you. If you don't know, don't worry, it'll come in due time. And if you, well, I was going to say, and if you want some advice, we have really great programs and people available for you to help you out. And I know that just having my own son being Colonial Forge, but also looking back at some of the things and trying to help him form his path, which, two years after high school, has finally come to fruition. So for, so for those of you who don't know, you have time and it's okay. To our seniors, your graduating seniors, this is, this is really where the rubber meets the road for you, so I wish you the best of luck. I hope that along the way, you've learned to realize that the only person that matters is you, and that as long as you love you and you accept you, this world has every opportunity for you in it. And you will be as successful as you choose to be. So choose to be successful. Doesn't have to be tomorrow, doesn't even have to be the next day, but choose to believe you can be. To my little kindergarteners, too, that are coming in, I did want to just say a little shout-out to the moms, not to the kindergarteners, because I know they're already sleeping, but to the moms, if you've already had kids in school, this is not for you, but if you're just sending that kid off to kindergarten for the first time come the, the new year, it goes fast, super fast. So enjoy every single moment this summer, because after this summer, it gets really, really, really crazy. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Guy?
I like to mix it up.
I was not ready. Okay. Not at all. No, I'm here now, it's the hot, the mic is hot, I'm here. So I'm just happy to be here and...
You don't need to talk longer, right?
Well, because she's, no, but she's been flip-flopping, so I thought I had a minute to find my notes. It's, it's okay. The only thing that's, well, I want to congratulate the students who are graduating who made it through. I know there's been a lot of parents who've been on their knees praying for their kid to actually make it through, and then they're going to be like, oh my God, my kid made it through. Because that was me last year. So, you know, congratulations to y'all and to the teachers who are retiring. Are you really sure? Like, can you stay a little bit longer? No? Okay, no. I'm happy for you, too, you deserve the best in life. So, you know, I hope you can be happy in retirement, whatever. So I, I do want to say, because this was great, I just found out on WTOP News on May fifth, that there is a fifteen-hundred-dollar grant that's available for every Virginia family, for your child to get core tutoring, made possible by a governor and some other people in Richmond, it's like a thirty-million-dollar fund. And so every student in Virginia's parents can apply for it. And if you get free and reduced lunch, then I think you qualify for three thousand dollars. So I'm going to put it on my social media, the link, I was, that's what I was looking for. But you can go to the Virginia Board of Education's website and you can just Google "educational grant" and it'll pop up. But I'll, I'll put the link. I just thought it was great, because no matter if your child is getting ones, or fours, or As, or Bs, it doesn't matter. You're a citizen, you can get the grant. And like I said, it goes for tutoring in the core competencies, or occupational therapy or speech therapy. And so I've already applied, it takes two weeks to find out. And then also, if anyone needs any help applying, I'm more than willing to help if you reach out to me on my social media. And that's it, let's just finish out the year great. And again, congratulations to everyone who is matriculating well.
Dr. Chase?
Jumping on? Okay. Hi. So first, with it being Teacher Appreciation Week, I've had a number of my students give presentations recently, talking about mental health and their students in, in children. And, you know, one of the best things is a really highly qualified teacher. And the fact is that our students spend the most time in the day with their teachers rather than anybody else. And so I want to thank our teachers. And I also want to say that when the budget from Virginia comes through, if we find that there is some money, I hope that we will do whatever we can to improve our teacher scale. We were able to do a raise, but we were not able to address the scale. I hope that if there is additional money, we will put that money to where I think it will probably have the highest impact. But that's just me, one member of the board. I was fortunate enough on April twelfth to go to Falls Run with Dr. Taylor and Chairwoman Randall, and thanks to Sandra Osborne and, and her staff, to talk with retirees in that community. And they were incredibly supportive of our schools and public education. And I know that they contacted supervisors to tell them that, that they were in support of our schools. Then April twentieth, I got to go over to Drew to the potty, which was a celebration of reading with our therapy dog, who came in today, and that was wonderful. And then April twenty-fifth, I got to go to Stafford High School and sit in on the AP African-American History class with Ms. Griffiths, and that was just wonderful. I had been asked by some constituents if we were offering the course, and I didn't know. And Dr. Taylor told me, yes, we were. And so I took advantage of, of sitting in and seeing what that was like. And then April twenty-seventh, we added another Dr. Chase to my family. My daughter Elizabeth, who went through, I guess, eleven years in Stafford County Public Schools, got her doctorate in biostatistics. So that was really great. And then finally, I, I did want to say something about the need for schools in Stafford County. You know, it's, it's a struggle, and we all have responsibilities to our constituents and we have responsibility to the county as a whole. I have put Drew, my constituents, back a little bit, with an understanding that we would be building two elementary schools at the same time, and there would be great savings for that. And that was for the best of the county. I'm very concerned that that's no longer the case. And so I am going to start really advocating hard for Drew. And I want to just mention a few problems at Drew. You may remember the three-point-five million dollars that didn't go to Drew, but went elsewhere. And it was supposed to handle climate. At Drew, there are rooms that have no heat, and then there are rooms that have no cooling. And so teachers have to bring in space heaters, fans, things like that, to have their rooms be reasonable, reasonable temperature. And then we've talked last year about the band, where it was on the stage and the orchestra was next door. And so they can't hear in orchestra, because there's a band playing next door at really large, loud amounts. You know, we were talking about parking tonight at the new high school. Drew doesn't have enough parking for its events. Drew can't hold events at Drew, because there's no parking there. Okay? They have mice, because it's an old school. They have limited storage. We talk about students keeping their cellphones in their backpacks. Well, there's no room in the classroom for a student to take their backpack. So I don't know what they do with their cellphones. The staff don't have reasonable bathrooms at Drew, because it's an old school. The PAWS program, which is just great, well, there was no room for it. The librarian gave up her office to the students to do that program. So if we're not going to do two elementary schools at the same time, this summer, we need to look at the CIP, and we need to seriously think about moving Drew back up to the top of the list, which I agreed to move it down from the top of the list, because I thought we were going to save money by constructing two elementary schools at once. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Dr. Warner?
First of all, I would like to thank all of our teachers. I realize that this year has gone extraordinarily fast, and you've put in a lot of effort. And we continue to ask you to do more with, sometimes not the resources that you need. We continue to try to, to fix the pay scale and to do the adjustments to the salary that are, that, that we think are necessary in order to keep and to recruit the teachers that we need for our schools. We can't fix the uniform scale. We, there's so many things we can't do, but one of the delays that really makes me angry is the fact that the state didn't pass a budget. They didn't do it. That's their job. And when you're an elected official, sometimes you have to make decisions that aren't always maybe the decision you really want to make. Maybe it's not the perfect choice, but it's the best choice. And it's a better choice than not making a decision at all. I have to thank our teachers and say that we are going to keep working for you. We will do whatever we can to maximize the money that we do receive in the state budget. We already know what the county's share will be. We are disappointed that the county did not give us the resources that we need to do some of the things that we want to do. We have, we have worked really hard to try to make those, to be able to meet those goals. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to go to a regional meeting for VSBA with local communities and talk to other school board members. I was interested to hear them talk about, you know, their twelve-million-dollar contingency fund and nine-million-dollar contingency fund, and the fact that they have these, this wealth of resources and this support from their, their governing boards. And I was rather envious, I do have to admit. The topic of conversation was the teacher shortage. And while salary is an important component of it, of that, I think there are things that we are doing right. I think the Mentor Three-Sixty program. I talk to teachers all the time, and that two years of mentorship that they get and assistance makes a huge difference in retaining our, our staff and helping them get through those first years as a teacher. There's nothing like walking into a classroom of feral children all by yourself for that first time. And I think we do have a very supportive staff. So I want to thank the second-grade teachers at Wide Water Elementary, who let me visit their classrooms this year and, and sit in and, and work with students. And I was an ambassador with that school this year. And I will tell you that it was really wonderful to watch those kids change from the beginning of the school year. They look like third graders now, and, and that's kind of scary to me. And I'm very excited for, for that opportunity. And there's some, Ms. Douglas, who is from Jamaica, and we have Mr. Perez, and I can't remember where he's from, but they have visiting teachers from other countries, and I think that diversity in the classroom is an important thing, and I'm glad to see it. So I wish to send my thank you to them and to the principal who, at Wide Water, Ms. Bingham, who puts up with me. And I wish all of our graduating seniors the very best going forward. Thank you.
Ms. Sigman?
Hi. I also wanted to express our gratitude to the, to our delegation from Richmond. Today is Fentanyl Awareness Day, which is why it was chosen to be this day. There was actually sixty locations across the state where the same thing was happening in schools and community hubs across the state. But it seems like Stafford had the biggest turnout as far as support from, from our state capital, including the Governor, the First Lady, Lieutenant Governor, the Attorney General, various members of Ca- of the Cabinet... governor, the attorney general, various members of the cabinet, and then the delegates who were instrumental in getting the fentanyl and education issues in front of us from the General Assembly. It was also great to have so many of our high school students in the room. I think they were from the Health, HOSA, the Health Occupational Student Association for Future Health Educators or Health Professionals, to go through this training with us. And then at the end, if the adults or those with parent permission were actually issued Narcan, so they can be lifesavers right now, walking out of that room, and had the opportunity to network with all of these decision-makers and meet and shake hands with them. Also wanted to wish best wishes to all of our performers. There's a lot of end-of-year concerts going on right now, so check the websites and go see them. I hope my daughter had her guitar and orchestra concert tonight, and I missed it, so maybe next year. Not on Tuesdays anymore, Dr. Taylor, and Mr. Daniel and whoever else coordinates over there. Also, tomorrow's the middle school county track final, so good luck to all of those athletes. Wanted to echo Dr. Taylor on the summer learning opportunities, but also the summer camp opportunities. A lot of our high school sports teams, cheer dance teams, host summer camps for younger students that are really great exposure to either try out a new sport or to develop skills in a sport or activity they already like. It's also a great fundraiser for our high school athletes and helps them to kind of teach the skills, reinforces it for themselves. The Fab didn't, the Budget Committee didn't meet this month, but I do want to remind you to check your students' lunch balances. And just because you don't think you have one, if you get a letter or an email or a phone call saying you do, you very well might. So please don't ignore it, and at least call and check and make sure it's not an error, because our children seem to really, really enjoy our school lunches and sometimes take them without our knowledge and enjoy them. I also just don't have the words to express gratitude for our students, I'm sorry, our teachers in this county, our students, too, particularly those that deal with the Sigman children every day. So big, big thank you there. Dr. Warner actually said what I was gonna say about budget. We really fought very hard to do what we needed to for our students, for our teachers, for our county. And I will continue to do that. And I'm maybe a little bit nitpicky on the language, but I keep seeing headlines and press releases that are celebrating that this is the largest budget transfer ever to the county schools. Well, big whoop. We add 300 students minimally every year. As long as we are a growing community, our budget transfer should be growing every year. Every year should be the biggest transfer, as long as we are adding students. It's not something that we should necessarily celebrate. It's great we are able to do it, but we should be doing more. And that's why I continue to bring up this contingency reserve, that people were calling a slush fund, and we're just money-grubbing. We don't need the money. We have spent money on things just today that we had no anticipation of. We have a lunch balance issue in this county that we don't have extra money to cover. We need technology for our buses. We have to take money out of other things. So to say that we don't need additional funds or an emergency fund, our lunch debt in this county exceeds our county's emergency fund. That's not a good place to be. I will continue to fight for what is right for our students, for our community, for our teachers. I am tired of this county being forced, or at least this school division, being forced into making decisions because they're quick, cheap, and easy. Our children deserve better, and our staff deserve better. And I will not back down on that. I'm only one vote, but I am not going into that. If it happens to also be quick, cheap, and easy, I will vote twice. But in the meantime, it is gonna be the right decision first.
Thank you, Ms. Sigman. Ms. Healy?
Thank you, Ms. Randall. I want to focus on the teachers. Every day should be Teacher Appreciation Day. Every week should be Teacher Appreciation Week. I think we are so grateful for our teachers. And as Dr. Taylor pointed out earlier, we've been fortunate to recruit teachers from other places. And that's something new, and I'll give you credit for that, Dr. Taylor. I think you've really done a lot to make this a warm and welcoming place. You've encouraged professional development, collaboration, and I think that we are being recognized for the environment that we have, you know, for our staff. Also, wanted to say I appreciate your letter and Dr. Jones's letter that you shared with all the staff about teachers who made a difference in your lives. And I think every teacher can look at it as, that could be me. That is me for some child, or more than one child somewhere, because I cannot believe that every teacher that we have has not made a difference. And, I mean, I don't know about you, but when Dr. Jones said that because it was his typing class, it was showing his age, well, I remember typing classes, and that was a long time ago. But thank you to our teachers. I welcome your relief at the end of the year. I share it to a certain extent, because although these are all joyful occasions, they are overwhelming with so much to do. And the choices we have to make, I wish we could be more places than, you know, one at a time, but that's the limits that we have. I wish everyone a great summer. I know I'm looking forward to graduation, starting with the Phoenix Center on Thursday, and of course, I'm back to Mountain View, my Rock Hill District High School on the 20th. And I do want to recognize two very, very special teachers. I mean, every one of our teachers is special, but in the Rock Hill District, and particularly in Garrisonville Elementary, we have two teachers who are retiring, who together have, I think it's probably close to 100 years of service. I mean, I know they're over 40, because I remember getting the 40-year pins, and I think we may have given 45-year pins. And that's Mrs. Fitzhugh, who was our focus teacher, and Mr. Harris, the art teacher. And I wish them all a wonderful retirement, as we all cry when they leave, because I cannot imagine Garrisonville without Mr. Fitzhugh, Mrs. Fitzhugh and Mr. Harris. I don't know how he's gonna get his room cleaned out, actually. You know, when you talk about art on the cart, that man would need, you know, an RV or something. But it's teachers that make a difference. And when we have, you know, we have teachers that are with us for decades, and then we have some teachers that are with us for a year. But everyone that's with us makes a difference. So please, just enjoy your summer and come back refreshed. I know we're all gonna be happy on that last day of school. Maybe the parents, not so much, because, you know, some love it, some don't, but enjoy it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Healy. Okay, I also would like to echo Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Several names, Ms. Fitzhugh being one. She taught sixth grade here, when I was a student here. And so did Arlene Mandudis. She was my eighth-grade band teacher, after I had had a different teacher for three years. So anyways, I'm just, it's so fun to hear these names while I'm sitting up here now as a school board member, and remembering my years as a student in Stafford County. I know, you know, I've said this story before. I wanted to be a truck driver, and my parents told me no. I had to go to college. I thought that was ridiculous, because I wanted to be a truck driver. I do drive by big cars now, but still, I wanted to be a truck driver. And my 12th grade year, it was one of my neighbors taught marine science. And so I came home and I told my mom, I said, I've changed my mind. I want to swim with killer whales. It just gets better with me. But as it turns out, I became a marine science teacher for Stafford County and taught with my 10th-grade biology teacher. And we decided to work together, and we chaperoned field trips to the Bahamas, where if you wanted to swim with sharks, yes, I was pregnant, you went on my boat. If you didn't want to swim with sharks, you went on my biology teacher's boat. So, yeah, the teachers have really made a difference in my life. I no longer swim with sharks and whales, but, you know. Ms. Healy, it's faster bedtime. Oh, my gosh. Whoa. Yeah. Cut her off. But I also had three kids in Stafford schools that actually got a lot, a lot of benefit in school. In fact, I remember getting a call from my oldest son, who now lives in Washington State, when he was in his second year of college, and said, Mom, I've changed my major and I've changed my mind. I don't want to be an accountant and finance and international something, business something. I want to be a teacher. And then he didn't call me first. He called the teacher that made the difference to him first. Said, how am I gonna tell my mom? And he said, just call her. And, you know, I always want my kids to do what they want to do. But it was a Stafford County teacher that made a huge difference in my kid, in his school experience, and ultimately, his career choice. So I definitely can appreciate the teachers that have guided me and tolerated my husband and worked with my three kids. So Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. I've really enjoyed the last few weeks. We've got the opportunity to celebrate the teachers in this county with Years of Service, Mentor 360, Gold Star Gala, and the retirement celebration coming up next week. And I've just really enjoyed time with all of those different teachers. Patrick Burnett and his crew, and Sandra Osborne and her crew, really have made these events just so touching, personal, and very good for the ones that are at the receiving end. Really enjoyed those. Also enjoyed May 1st Decision Day at Stafford High School. I really like that we take the time and celebrate the kids for whatever their decision is, whether it's employment, or enrollment, or enlistment. And they each got to get their certificate based on their choice and be celebrated for just being them. And so I enjoyed that as well. I also attended today with Governor Yonkin and his staff and his wife for Fentanyl Awareness Day. The largest, that group of students behaved so well in there. All of us got to learn, Ms. Healy, Ms. Sigman, and myself, revive. So at the end, we all got our box of Narcan, so that if the need ever arise, whether by accident, by choice, by surprise, that you get the help you need sooner, so you can survive. The Rappahannock Health Department did a fantastic job teaching those kids everything they needed to know. And they are willing to come back out and teach anyone who would like that training. And so I encourage you to get that training, because one thing we learned today was 42 pounds of fentanyl was seized. That's not all there was. 42 pounds. That's enough to kill every resident in the state of Virginia. 42 pounds. So I just want everyone to be aware that when you think you're buying a pill, make sure you're getting it from, from your doctor. And I'm gonna stop, because I'm gonna cough. So happy graduation, happy end of year, and we'll see you at the next meeting on June 13th.